All right, good evening ladies and gentlemen. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Montclair Planning Board. Notice of this meeting is published in the local papers, posted in lobby of this building. We are being broadcast live on Channel 34, streamed live on montclair.peg.tv. This meeting is a continuation of a quasi judicial proceeding, meeting we have the powers and procedures resembling a court of law. We are obligated to objectively determine facts and draw conclusions from them in order to provide a basis for an official action. Any questions or comments should be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision and decorum appropriate for a judicial hearing should be maintained at all times. First on our agenda this evening is our roll call.
Chair Wynn?
Here.
Vice Chair Brodoff?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Here.
Counselor Schlegel?
Here.
Ms. Willis?
Here.
Mr. Rooney?
Here.
Mr. Ian Wally's excused. Ms. Lockman?
Here.
Mr. Barr is excused. Mr. Gilmer?
Here.
Okay.
We have our minutes from January 14th meeting.
I didn't receive any comments on the January 14th minutes.
I do have one change on page three, which I guess is the last page.
Okay.
Be the third paragraph, third line where it says production and I think it's quality assurance?
Oh, yes.
And that was it.
Okay. Are there any other changes?
Move to approve as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
We have a resolution, Mary and Joel Jeffrey, 115 Cooper Avenue, and 118 Bevel Avenue.
Are there any amendments or changes to the resolution?
No. Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay.
All right, and that brings us to the continuation of our hearing on the Lackawanna Plaza development. I think Robin wants to address the board.
Yes, okay, thank you, Chair. Due to my position on the council and the long history of this application and many discussions with my colleagues here on the council and our board attorneys, I reluctantly have determined that it's best that I not participate in the proceedings going forward. Therefore, I regretfully will step away from the remainder of the hearings effective immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin.
Thank you.
Let the record reflect that counsel person is leaving the desk.
Dennis is going to turn on your mic.
Let the record reflect that the counsel person is leaving the desk. All right, so, we've had fourteen meetings?
Yes.
Worth of information that I'm sure, like myself, you've been trying to crawl through since our last meeting. And we need to look at a few things, few obvious things. So, where would you like to begin?
Actually, Mr. Chairman?
Is your mic on?
I think maybe I just not close enough.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just indulge for a moment, I had mentioned this to the board's attorney prior to this evening, and this follows up to a statement that was made at the conclusion of our last hearing. The applicant had hoped to be able to come tonight and be able to announce the name of a grocer tenant that it has been ongoing lease negotiations with. I'm actually pleased to report that we are in a position to do that. And so, perhaps a bit unorthodox, but with your and the members of the board's permission, I'd ask that the applicant be able to introduce that there's actually somebody here from the grocer tenant to just sort of make the announcement and to the extent that helps.
You didn't bring a drum roll?
Thought about it, but marching band outside.
All right. Sure, I think we can proceed with that.
And for the record, there was no disclosure to me of who?
No disclosure to me as to who the Shop Right tenant would be.
Shop being center. If it turns out to be Shop Right, I'm just going to like.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, Brian Stoller and Rob Schmidt from Hampshire have already been sworn in, I believe, but they can make the introduction.
I'm going to be very, very brief. I'm sorry, I thought there was another matter before and I was rushing here. So, I know it's extremely important to the board and to the members of the public that there be a food store here and for the township and for the Fourth Ward. And one of the reasons that we brought in the Hampshire companies is that they've been developers and owners of food stores for about fifty years. And so, I would like to ask Mr. Rob Schmidt, who has spoken before from Hampshire, to tell you what he's been able to accomplish since the last meeting.
Thanks the board for listening to me today. It's not Shop Right. I will say before I unveil the curtain, I would like to say that it's been a little bit frustrating listening to some of the public commentary, month in and month out, implying that there hasn't been an intent to find a grocer. That was never our intent all along. And this kind of like, the implication was, it was kind of a smokescreen that we were never looking for a grocery anchor tenant. That's absolutely not the case. As Brian alluded to, we've been doing this for over fifty-one years now. We have over two and a half million square feet of grocery anchored real estate properties, over twelve different grocery tenants. It's our business, it's what we do. We know how important a grocery store is to the Fourth Ward. And we wouldn't dream of trying to pursue this application without diligently pursuing a grocery store tenant. So, we've done that. And the tenant is a company called Lidl. They're a little bit under the radar screen, but we think they're a perfect fit for the Fourth Ward and the community of Montclair at large. They're value oriented, but high quality products. Legitimate company, again, under the radar screen, but note that they've, they're one of the largest grocers in the country, in the world, I would say. They started out in Germany. They don't like to compare to Aldi. They feel like they have higher quality merchandise than Aldi at better pricing, but they have ten thousand five hundred stores worldwide headquartered in DC now in the US. They've had stores in the US for five years now. They're up to sixty-five stores in total in the US. And they're on an expansive growth strategy right now, looking to open several more stores in New Jersey. In fact, we have a couple other sites that we're speaking with Lidl to put them in as well, in northern New Jersey. Several stores in mid and central New Jersey, including Eaton Town, Haslett, Union, and Vinland. They're looking at two new stores in Bergen County. They're up and down the mid-Atlantic states, a lot of stores in Virginia, several in the Atlanta area. And they're kind of a new breed of grocer that's delivering high quality value goods at reasonable prices. And as I said, I really feel like they're going to meet the wants and needs of the residents in the community. In addition to food, they sell a lot of other products, including small appliances, gardening, power tools, and smaller kitchen utensils. We think they're going to be a great fit. And I do have the representative here from Lidl, Lidl, it rhymes with needle, that's how you remember how to pronounce it. And I have a nice brochure here that I'll pass around for the board to look at this. We have other photos too. We weren't able to mass produce them, but we will follow up with that shortly. But really, a great company that we're very excited about. It is a smaller format, but I know there's been a lot of requests to look for smaller format grocers, so they kind of fit the bill on that. The floor plan is going to be somewhere around twenty-nine thousand square feet, so we're pleased at that as well. And I think I've hit the high points before I will introduce the real estate representative from Lidl, who graciously offered to come with us here tonight. So, I'll ask Nick Buckner to come up from Lidl.
Yeah, he did. He just hit that side. I don't know why hitting them before didn't work. So, do you use things like OneNote and stuff like that?
I can, I can.
Which do you use for notating?
Pen and paper.
Hmm?
Pen and paper.
Do this and then transfer it to them.
I scan it in, yeah.
My financial advisor does everything on his computer. And he can write on it, he can do everything.
What about that?
He's got the Microsoft.
He does.
I think it'd be great. I just.
Some of the pens work better, a bit more like pencil.
Should I put this individual under oath?
Why not? Everybody else who spoke this evening has been under oath, so let's keep it consistent.
Raise your hand. Do you swear a firm testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and that part of the truth?
I do.
Kindly state your full name for the record, spell your last name.
Nicholas Alexander Buckner.
Spell your last name.
Oh, sorry. Nick. Nicholas Alexander.
No, you spell your last.
Oh, spell, I thought you said spare. B-U-C-K-N-E-R.
Did you get it?
I got it.
Okay, we got it.
Mr. Buckner, could you just give the board a brief overview of your title, where you work, and your, I guess, responsibilities there?
Sure, no, absolutely. So, my name's Nick Buckner. I'm a real estate manager with Lidl U.S. I've been with the company for almost two and a half years. And I oversee currently the geographical territories of northern New Jersey, which includes obviously Essex County, Bergen County, Hudson County, parts of Middlesex as well. But my responsibilities mainly is on the site acquisition side, locating sites for our stores, and also running it through the various approvals and entitlement process, really anything up until building permits issued, and then it's therefore handed off to another colleague of mine who runs a construction process on both ground-up development and fit-out build, you know, space lease type projects.
And, Mr. Buckner, obviously you heard the introduction to the applicant's having signed a lease with Lidl subject, obviously, to site plan approval, which the applicant's seeking this evening. But just for purposes of, I guess, the board members who may or may not be familiar with the company, as well as members of the public, could you just give a little bit of overview as to who Lidl is and, you know, your intended operations?
Sure. So, thanks again for having me welcome in tonight, and thanks for, Rob, for giving a brief overview. But I just want to kind of first start off by saying how excited we are to announce the signing of this lease. We think that Montclair is the perfect town for us to operate in, and this presents a perfect site for us. Something that we really strive for on a site, you know, characteristics is really to be convenient for our customers and be close to population. And this site, obviously, with its, you know, close to downtown walkability and very pedestrian friendly, is something that really enticed us to obviously reach out to Hampshire and start, you know, trying to, you know, get a lease signed on this property as quickly as possible. As Rob had mentioned, you know, we have been interested in the site for a long time. You know, we were working through internal approvals at that time and going through, obviously, through lease negotiations at that point. So, I do want to just reiterate that, you know, from our company, we appreciate our name being held confidential until the lease was signed, but, you know, happy to be here today to tell us a little bit about our concept and why we think we'll be a great fit for your community. So, as Rob had stated, worldwide, Lidl is one of the largest, not only grocery chains, but retailers in the world. It currently operates over ten thousand five hundred stores in twenty-eight different countries. We did come to the US in 2014. We actually opened our first stores in 2017 and have further expanded up and down the East Coast. So, as Rob had mentioned, we actually just recently opened three stores in Atlanta Metro Market. So, that was a further south stores, further southern stores to date. And then, we actually, within the past six months, have opened up several stores in northern New Jersey, and we actually made our first entryway into the New York market by opening a store in Staten Island in December. To further that commitment, we also recently acquired, actually as of last month, a regional grocery chain in Long Island called Best Market. So, we acquired about twenty-seven leases, twenty-four of those in Long Island. There's an additional store in Queens, additional one in Harlem as well. So, it's really to continue to penetrate the US market and to, you know, gain additional stores in the Northeast as we continue to ramp up operations. From our concept, we definitely think we're a unique concept, and we don't really, you know, compare to other competitors in the US market. I would say majority of our products, anywhere from eighty to ninety percent of our products, are private label. So, that means our own private label that, you know, has proven to be very high quality, especially only in the recent, you know, several years of our operating history in the US. We've really made a commitment to the communities we operate in. Even being a European country, we do source majority of our products from the US. So, a lot of our grass-fed meats, a lot of our, you know, hundred percent certified sustainable seafood is locally sourced. But we do also import, obviously, certain European niche items such as cheeses and various other baked goods, you know, from various European countries that we obviously have a lot of history and knowledge of working in. In addition, we have an in-house fresh bakery that's baking many different breads, pastry items, and various other baked goods throughout the day, and really just adds that fresh, high-quality appeal to our customers that we've been seeing resonate very, very well in the US and have gotten a tremendous response. That being said, we're, you know, definitely a very flexible company. We always believe that we want to adapt to the customer and not try to, you know, force them into liking our concept. We want to fit the customers we are, so we're always about customer feedback and investing in the communities and hearing their voices and making sure that we really, you know, become long-term stewards of our stores and invest, you know, invest in our stores to keep them, you know, to where they're always fresh and always clean and always, you know, top-line operating and efficient as well.
So, Mr. Chairman, unless you have further questions, that was really the introduction we wanted to make and a little bit of the overview of the operation.
Thanks. I don't think we have any questions right now. There, Mike?
I have a question.
Sure.
In your penetration in the US, have you adaptively reused any site similar to what we have here in Montclair?
As far as open stores currently? As far as open stores relating to the Lackawanna?
Yeah, have you ever gone into a site, like, it was an old warehouse or something, or a train station, or a mill or something, and adaptively reused it to fit your store within that site?
Not to date. So, primarily, the focus when we first entered was to primarily own our real estate and our ground-up prototype. So, that was, you know, again, the first wave of stores really modeled that. It was really until recently that we got into leasing existing buildings and, you know, taking looks at adaptive reuse of those buildings. By continuing Europe, obviously, operating over ten thousand stores in some very historical European towns and villages, we've been very successful at that and, you know, obviously maintain the integrity of the areas and the, you know, local aesthetic and community, but also have, you know, successfully converted that to their efficient and, you know, become successful in their own right.
But have you thought about that for the Lackawanna site? Not tearing down the train sheds and putting your store in the existing site as it is?
We've evaluated several, obviously, Hampshire has brought to our attention the kind of context of, you know, where discussions have been. I can tell you that, you know, really, the current plan as it is, is really what sold our executives on the site. We really do like to have visibility. We like the current renderings as they are. And obviously, you know, having the additional parking field is something that we definitely required from that. So, I think, you know, again, when I say it's a perfect site for us, our executives on their site visit, you know, and explaining to them kind of the image and the overall vision for the project is really what got them to buy in, and that's something that they ultimately approved the project on.
Well, to follow up further on that, have you considered, or have you been presented with, the more open space format that some have kicked around here, using effectively the old train station as an overall supermarket, some of which I've seen in some European stores where they've taken old train stations, old buildings, and used that as the supermarket space itself? Did you consider that in any discussions with the applicant?
We were, yes, we did consider many opportunities with the applicant and looked at various ways. Again, I think the current plan, as they have presented, is really the one that we bought in on and wanted to have the exterior entryway and, you know, really, again, the redeveloped facade and some of the features that they included on the most recent renderings is really, again, what I presented to our internal committee, which got them, you know, selling off, buying off on the site.
Did you see any of the alternative plans that were presented within the community at any point in time?
I did, yes.
And were they presented to your executives and rejected, or did they not see them?
It was early on in the process, so again, I mean, it was something where I, you know, obviously, I've done many other sites and understanding what we're looking for and, you know, other alternatives in different areas. It was something that, again, once we came in and kind of talked through the context and the history of the project, the current site plan as it is, is really what, you know, got us to buy in on the site, that we would have the visibility and we would have the exposure that, you know, was required for all of our other existing stores that got approved.
Supposing you were able to get the same exposure with storefront but further out in the lot, with the smaller lot in front, would that, if you still have your glass window in the front, would that be of interest still? Or is that the key element that you're looking for, the frontal exposure?
I think parking too is a big thing for us, so having the, you know, the increased parking count is something that is absolutely integral for us. Obviously, we understand it's a walkable site. However, per our standards and criteria, we do have minimum parking threshold, so I could not get a, you know, site approved based on the existing parking of the site as it exists today. So, I do believe that, you know, partial removal of the existing building and added parking is really, again, something that we absolutely need from our end as an operator.
Supposing there was less residential and more parking on that side?
I'm sorry?
Supposing there was some more parking and a smaller residential footprint, but additional parking across the street?
So, as far as additional parking on the other side of the street? I mean, we wouldn't view that and count that internally. I mean, obviously, it is accessible, but we would view the most of, we want to be efficient for our customers and accessible, so that's why we really view the parking lot in front of them. You know, even on our existing prototype stores, you won't see parking in the back employee park, and we really want to be close to our entryway, convenient, and obviously safe as well. We don't want to have our customers worrying about crossing traffic and, you know, maneuvering different roadways as well.
You can come back, we may, in the course of discussion, we may have gone.
I have another question for Mr. Stoller. So, I think it says the grocery store is supposed to be forty-seven or so thousand square feet. This he just said was twenty-nine thousand square feet. What do you plan to do with the other, you know, seventeen thousand square feet grocery? It was, you know, illustrated as a grocery store. What, do you have a plan for that, any other prospective tenants, or?
First of all, you had said, it says forty-seven thousand. You mean the total retail?
The total grocery store, I think, was supposed to be forty-seven thousand square feet. I mean, we could go check the number, but it's something like that.
What we had said was that we were talking to folks between thirty and mid-forties.
That's a legitimate question.
And this is the one we liked the most. So, this really just was able to get finalized, so we don't have any exact tenants. But I would tell you that based upon who they are and the quality of the company and the financial credibility of them worldwide, we think we'll have, you know, very good choices for the rest of the space there for complementary uses.
But I think what Cornell was asking is would there be additional space, maybe in unused areas that's not shown on the plan now?
No, we're going to fit, Mr. Chairman, maybe we weren't precise, we're going to fit the exact footprint that's there. No changes at all.
Of the path, of the former path?
Of our plans that we presented.
As I understand it, though, you'll have additional retail uses because this is only using thirty thousand square feet for what's shown as forty-six thousand.
Correct.
So, you'll fill in that space with additional?
In the existing plan, as we've presented.
Right.
No changes to the facade or anything else.
It's just the tenant, the nature of the tenant will change.
So, meaning that there might be some interior mall kind of space for other tenants to access, or the tenants will be in the, only be in the exact same places that they're showing on the current plans?
Correct. The frontage of the building, entire building, instead of being one tenant all the way across east to west, Lidl will be a portion of that, like two-thirds of it, and the balance that's left could be other tenants. But this is not an interior, this is not anybody behind anybody, this is the same facade we showed.
So, that would mean expanding some of the currently depicted spaces for larger? Because right now, yeah, I'm confused, because right now, the way that the plan is being offered, every space is being accounted for, and the space for the supermarket is over forty thousand square feet. So, you're not going to be using all of that, or the supermarket is not going to be using all that space. So, what about, what's going to happen with that excess space?
The other tenants and uses within the same building adjacent to Lidl.
So, there'll be another tenant space, maybe, or two tenants?
Correct.
In between where the supermarket is?
And the office building.
And where the tenants that are facing or aligned with the tenants that are perpendicular to the?
That are north-south adjacent to the?
Lackawanna Plaza tenants.
Correct. Correct.
Right, right, right. So there might be just the supermarket, there could be a supermarket and something else next to it.
Correct.
And I guess also, I was curious, do you have a larger tenant like Lidl, Lidl, that's looking at that larger space? Are you thinking of chopping it up or maybe haven't gotten?
We just haven't gotten there.
Okay.
We're just frankly so excited that we found such a high-quality grocer, that's the win we're focused on now. I can tell you, and certainly Hampshire could tell you more because they're really retail specialists, they do a lot of it, that we will have a tremendous draw with Lidl for the best of the other types of retail uses and other users who want to be next to good anchors. I think that's the key point.
I would like to compliment the choice of a store that is that size. It's actually the same size as the Acme market, which is 30,000 square feet.
It is, yes, that's correct.
And the superfood town in Bloomfield is almost about the same size as well, so it seems like it might be a very suitable match.
It's a good neighborhood size, and they have a full range of a supermarket. There were, as you know, some other choices that were far smaller, and we were really trying to get something that?
Sounds like a good size to me, too.
Is part of your model during delivery?
It's something that we've kind of run test pilot programs of. I think it's part of a longer-term focus, obviously, as trends change, but as to date, it's not something that internally we've developed yet, no.
And related to that pickup where people order in advance and then pick up kind of prepackaged checkout items, is that currently operating at stores at this point or something in the future that you're looking at?
As far as like physical vendors or just grab-and-go type products within the store?
Grab-and-go where you order in advance and then they're waiting there in the bags and you simply put them in the car?
It's some, again, it's something we obviously contemplate for. We kind of designed to have those features, but currently, we don't have that concept implemented in operating stores with that.
Great. And just one other question that affects a bit of what we've seen as well. In terms of kind of employment and how you set up other stores, are you anticipating more employment from the local community, which may affect, of course, parking, traffic, et cetera? Or would you leverage expertise from other Lidl stores, just to get a sense of kind of what you anticipate in establishing the store here?
Yeah, I mean, we definitely tap into hire local employees. As far as management positions, obviously, given the experience in other operating stores, it's something that they might oversee or transfer to additional stores, but I would say majority of the store employee base will be locally hired, yes.
Doesn't look like there are any other questions for the moment, although some might arise in the course of our discussions. So we'd appreciate it if something does come up that we would have the opportunity to raise that with you.
Mr. Buck, are you okay to hang out for a few minutes?
Absolutely.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We don't have anything further.
All right, thank you, Councilor. All right. So Carmen, what's up?
Do you want me to start?
Why not? I know you've looked at a few things.
I have looked at a few things. Why don't you start, John? No?
Well, I think the first thing that we need to do is, there's a couple of major issues that we need to address here. Certainly, historic preservation is one, parking is the other, that are on my list. Anybody else have any additions to that?
No, I think that's the basis of our discussion, is historic preservation and parking, management and valet.
So we've been given some information this evening. Actually, it was in our packet memorandum with respect to parking. And from our parking expert, Mr. Geosse, have you guys had a chance to look at that?
I did, but I'd like to go. I didn't bring it.
I have, but can I, I would just like to make an objection to the things that we found at our seat today. I mean, I think for the size of what we were expected to look at, it seems kind of really unfair not to have sent that information out ahead of the meeting so that we could have digested it and asked any questions. So I'm just raising that as kind of an objection.
You know, I appreciate that. I would have liked to have had them before the meeting also, but it looks like there was quite a bit of work put into this.
Yes, which is all the more reason we want to look at it, yeah.
But, you know, again, there being a limited amount of time from our last meeting to this meeting, you know, that is, you know, an issue. So, you know, that's probably why. And if we need more time to digest what's reported here, we can certainly take it. But going back to the parking issue, since we did get that ahead of the, our discussions this evening, from my standpoint, it looks as if the parking arrangement in general, notwithstanding maybe some tweaks that we might offer, but it looks like the plan that's proposed is what would work best based on, you know, considering several alternatives that have been brought up during the course of the hearing. Thoughts on that?
I agree. That seems to be our parking consultant's point of view.
Yes, it did, but I also know that the parking consultant had also said in the past that valet parking on the west lot was not a good idea, that the valet parked cars should be on the east lot. That wasn't mentioned again, but I think that's one of the things that we?
That might be a tweak. But we've had discussions about that, about alternative ways that it could operate. And certainly, I think the overall space that's provided for parking would allow some alternatives to the exact plan that's being presented. Maybe the valet parking could be done at least for the majority of the time, notwithstanding heavy periods of usage, but at least for the majority of the time, it could be done adequately on the west lot.
I agree that the, that our parking expert's evaluation was such that the parking plan that the applicant proposed is the best, but it does raise then still the juxtaposition whether or not an alternative or secondary parking plan, the equities of that stand up to the overriding issue or the complimentary issue of knocking down portions of a historic site. And to me, the evaluation then becomes, is there any other parking plan, be it not as good but still functional, that allows the preservation of the existing structure, which would still provide for a potential supermarket retail space, be it with a not as good a plan, parking plan, but facing that juxtaposition of decision-making? And so that's what I was trying to get from the, from our parking expert, whether or not there is any other parking plan that works and the downsides of that.
Well, here's the thing, Martin. I mean, we have to, in making our decision, base it on the evidence that's been presented to us at this hearing. And we're here evaluating the applicant's plan, and we're not tasked with the idea of coming up with a better plan. We're tasked with the idea, or the, a duty, rather, to make a decision on the plan that the applicant has submitted. Now, we've had some alternative suggestions brought up during the testimony, during the years' worth of testimony that we've had on this. And, you know, and for that reason, I can appreciate the need for us to understand how those suggestions might impact and what our parking expert thought about those suggestions. And his opinion seems to be that all of the suggestions were inferior at the end of the day. None of them are perfect, but all of them are inferior due to one reason or another. And whether or not there's a better way to do it, we can't make a decision based on the possibility that outside of what was presented at this hearing, that there was something else that might work better or that might work in alternative.
But even his evaluation, instead of two-way, one-way, which is inferior, but yet then in other words, we are still left with the overriding decision of the equities or the public good of taking down a three-government-level-approved historic building versus a parking plan that might still work but not be as good.
Okay. Well, the, again.
In other words, somebody, let me finish. Somebody could view, if indeed there is any parking plan that works, it seems to me somebody could view the decision to knock down this designated historic site as arbitrary because there were alternatives.
Oh, I disagree with that.
I understand you.
I don't think it would, I don't think it would be a question of being arbitrary.
What I'm saying is that that could be a takeaway, that there were some alternative options not considered, be they not as good, but that particularly since the master plan calls very strongly for maintaining preservation and maintaining our historic sites, and the master plan specifically calls not for providing massive parking lots on, right within the downtown, that those two issues, when compared to a potentially inferior parking plan even admittedly, might not hold up. And that's why I said it could be considered an arbitrary decision or unreasonable decision if indeed that was the call that the board made. Anyway, that's my point.
Let's talk about this giant parking lot concept. You know, me personally, I've listened to it during the hearing. What we have now is truly a giant parking lot that starts on one side of Grove Street and extends to the other side of Grove Street.
And just to give you, it's 106 spaces in the current lot, so you're almost doubling it if you have, if you agree with the applicant's plan.
Right. But?
Are you referring to the other plot?
I'm talking, I'm talking about the east plot. I'm talking, no, no, it's, it's not hidden. It's, in my opinion, okay, for whatever you might feel, it's not hidden. It's wide-open space.
You mean now?
There are no, there's no vegetation, there's no trees.
You mean now?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
It's wide-open spaces. It starts at the old waiting room, extends across the front of the current structure where the mall and the supermarket are. It goes across the street and it extends from Bloomfield Avenue to Glenridge Avenue, from Grove Street up to the apartment buildings, okay, that are, that are on the east side of it. That's a huge parking lot. What we're talking about here is not that big, okay? It's not as big as what we've been living with for the past 30, 40 years, all right?
Here we are, making a change.
So, well, let me finish, let me finish. I'm just, I'm just giving you my opinion, all right? The way that I'm, the way that it appears to me. And yes, you know, big parking lots are not desirable in our town, but we've lived with this condition in a way that I think is worse than what's being proposed right now. And we've lived with it because I think of the realization that in order to have a substantial supermarket, you need a big parking lot in order to accommodate the traffic. We have two other supermarkets in town, but the two other supermarkets that are in town, we're talking about, I think, a lesser degree of business. The lot that the, I guess, the, what is it, Stop &amp; Shop? The old, not Stop &amp; Shop.
Acme?
Acme, on Valley Road, is, it's a different kind of lot because of the, because of the way that the street goes and because of the way that, the way that the development has established around it, okay? If we could change the development around the train station, well, great, we could do something different. But unfortunately, we're stuck, and the applicant is stuck with parcels of land that are very well-defined by existing streets that are not going to be changed or altered. And we need to provide substantial, sufficient parking to not only deal with the supermarket and with business, but we've got an office building. And clearly, we're considering a reduction in the requirement of spaces because of the fact that there's just simply not enough space to lay out all of these parking lots unless you start decking and you start going to alternative arrangements, that, you know, again, in my opinion, I would rather see a larger lot leading up to the store with the existing train station, a waiting room, and a majority of the existing amenities, historic amenities there, rather than seeing a parking deck. You know, we can't go underground because of Tony's Brook. So, I mean, the only alternative is a parking deck in order to get a supermarket of this size.
No, that isn't the only alternative, John. So if you look at the medical office building, because of its use as a medical office building, it has a higher density use than if it was just a general office building. By, I think I calculated, 72 spots would be freed up if this wasn't a medical office building and was just a general office building.
But it is a medical office building. There are tenants there. What are you going to, what are you going to do, kick them out?
Do they have a tenant yet?
Martin, it doesn't pay for you as a third party to interject.
What?
To interject.
Does they, does, do you have a medical office tenant yet? So to me, it's part of the whole plan is that you're designated this use as a medical office building. The other thing that they can do is to allow the public to use the east lot and enter their tunnel. And I kind of like, why is that such an issue? You could, if you were worried about security, there's an elevator that I guess they want the tenants to use that's in a vestibule, lock the door. You know, I don't know what the issue is there about letting people use that parking lot.
If you lived in an apartment building and you had underground parking, would you be comfortable with that apartment building letting the general public go into that parking lot when you're coming in there late at night by yourself?
You know?
That's the, I'm saying, that's the issue.
Why is there this fear thing going on for fourth ward space?
What do you mean?
I mean, I feel like that's ridiculous.
What do you mean?
It's not a scary, you know, it's not a scary neighborhood.
The fact is if there's no crime in Montclair.
Crime will over the place, but that's not a particularly scary neighborhood.
Yes, there is. And that's just a reality. And, you know, I don't want to get into you, get into a debate about the crime statistics, but, you know, it's, you read the local papers.
That would solve an issue of accessibility if you use that parking lot for public use.
But you, but your question was, your question was, why is there an issue with it? The answer is that, because there's a concern for public safety. Whether you agree with it or not, that's the reason. I happen to think that, yeah, that's a legitimate reason. But again, if you change the medical office building to a regular office building, what kind of savings is that going to get you on parking?
72 spots.
And 72 spots is still going to call for a massive, a massive reduction in the, so...
In conjunction with letting the public use the other lot, you're freeing up quite a lot of space.
Again, there are, okay, okay, again, there are, there are, there are ways to, there are ways, other ways to sort this out. And there's pros and cons to those ways, okay? Let us finish, Martin, okay? We obviously have different opinions about, you know, how that balances out, all right? But it's not as if there, you know, my opinion is irrational, and it's not as if your opinion is irrational, it's what you're prioritizing. is irrational, it's what you're prioritizing, I think. And, again, our job is to make a decision based on the application that's before us, all right? And it's not to redesign the application.
No, well, you said there was no other alternatives, and I said, yes, there is.
Well, I, yeah, there are alternatives, maybe I should say there are no other more attractive alternatives, and that's where we'll disagree. Martin?
So, two points, because you made the argument. I, I don't think one can make a winning argument that there already is a parking lot, a huge parking lot, that we see that's in direct violation of what the master plan calls for, and therefore, that's the argument to continue the very condition that the master plan is saying we should make an effort to mitigate.
That wasn't my argument.
Hold on, please.
That wasn't my argument, you mischaracterized. My argument was what we have here is an improvement of that, just so that we're clear.
Secondly, again, I think it comes back to the fundamental decision as to the value of preserving what is a historic building. And my concern is that in 20 years, people are going to look back and not say, wow, they gave them a bunch of apartments and knocked down the, the building here. I think they're gonna look back and say, boy, were they not too smart taking down this beautiful building that was a historic landmark for the prospect of giving some extra apartments that we may or may not need at this time. But the reality is, the applicant bought the site that was a functional retail site with sufficient parking in the east lot, and has proposed apartments which are then taking away the parking for the very supermarket we want to bring there. So, we're kind of put into a box, an either-or box, and yet the underlying decision is really whether or not, if there is, if there are less apartments or sufficient parking east, do you preserve this building? So, we've been put into an either-or decision here, I'm not sure that that's really where we should be heading. I have supported developing this site from the very beginning. I, I supported adaptive reuse here, but, again, we're left with the call of having to significantly destroy what is a landmarked historic site, both federally, state, and local, and.
What's your definition of significant? Because, again.
Can I help on that?
Just, just so that, just so that we're clear, you keep talking about destroying the building, and it sounds like we're tearing down the, we're tearing down the waiting room, we're tearing down the promenade that goes along Lackawanna Plaza. Basically, we're talking about taking out a portion of the stanchions, because the overhead pieces, the overhead pieces, the concrete pieces, they're deteriorated, they can't, they can't, they can't stand without rehabilitation, all right? So we're talking about taking out a portion of that. We're talking out, we're talking about taking out a portion of something that nobody has seen, and most people don't pay attention to. And the reason why I say that, the reason why I say that is because when we started this whole thing, a couple of years ago, we had public roundtables at the firehouse, right? You remember those? And when we talked about it, the feedback that we got from the public then was, yeah, we don't want to touch the waiting room. Nobody said anything about the stanchions. No, wait a minute, let me finish, let me finish, no, let me finish, let me finish. Nobody said anything about those stanchions until 11 months ago, 12 months ago. And then it became, then it became an issue, then it became an issue. And so far as I'm concerned, the tracks are gone, the whole flavor of those sheds, covers, whatever you wanna call them, has been out of the public view, it has been assumed in an existing building, all right? I think in order to get the kind of development that we need here, that there needs to be some compromise. And quite frankly, my value and the beauty that I see is in the waiting room and what's there, what's, what's adjacent to the waiting room. I don't have a lot of value that I put in those sheds, based on everything that I've heard here. We've had a lot of testimony from a lot of experts on it. And we're not gonna put train tracks back there. If we expose them, if they could be exposed, we don't even know, because part, part of them is buried in concrete, and the fact of uncovering them could destroy them, could jeopardize them, could, you know, it's, it's just, it's really, for me, personally, again, it's a little bit too iffy for me. And that's something that I would be willing, quite frankly, to look at as, in compromising, trying to get some of the other things that we want, to let some of those go. That's my opinion.
So I, I disagree with that because we've heard substantial testimony and evidence that the 1980 renovation really encompasses what was the original building. The problem is that.
Stop calling it a building.
Please don't interrupt me, nobody interrupted you when you spoke, which was.
You did.
I did not.
Anyway.
You've got to.
Sorry, go ahead.
We've heard substantial testimony that the building survives, that it meets the Secretary of Interiors regulations, although the applicant's, the applicant's witness would dispute that. And, but for the fact that there was agreeably a tacky interior renovation with the stores that are there, if it was opened up and allowed to exist as an, as a, an open airspace and used accordingly, I think people would have an entirely different feel about what is a historic site. And the reality is, it is designated historic, and as much as Mr. Bedford wants to dispute that, it is a federal, state, and locally designated site at this time. And while we want a supermarket, I believe a supermarket can function in there, and to me, that appears to be the priority, to maintain that site and to work a supermarket in there accordingly, and to work the parking around that, because I think that's what's going to be remembered, or remembered that it's not there in years to come. Not that we gave some additional apartments, you know, not that we cut up the, the site accordingly, I think that is the underlying cause.
Yeah.
All right, all right. This is, this is, this is, this is, this is not gonna be a forum for applause or boos. We're not doing that this evening, all right? This is not a popularity contest. This is a legal decision. So, consider that your first warning.
I just, oh, go ahead.
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not happy that there needs to be a compromise, but I think compromise is the only way out to a forward move. And I, I guess the issue being debated is, can we have both a supermarket and retain the historic site completely as is? And what I've looked at is the amount of what is there that is being preserved. We had a number of, the building, the, the stanchions, the, the, the waiting room, the trough, and all of those things. And the one thing that remains without a satisfactory conclusion is the, retaining all of the sheds. And the question that I debated for some time was, I liked some of the proposals that moved the supermarket forward into the sheds. It did not come from those who own the land, however, and I did not find that that solution was found a tenet. We can say, well, they didn't look very hard, or whatever. But our own consultant said that that might be difficult. So I was at the point where I was really hoping that we could do both. We could find a way to move the supermarket into the sheds, which is what the, the proposals were from some of those that we read, that we saw. But I have not found that it's proven to be one that has been bought or is viable by those who own the property. And that has made it difficult for me to, to stand against the solution that has been found. I am very pleased that we found a tenet, because the supermarket is a number-one priority. It comes above everything else that we have, a supermarket. And since we are retaining a good percent of what, we got everything retained except the sheds, all of them. There will be at least one shed in front of the supermarket that does give the east-west line of the old train station some recognition. And at this point, with great pain, it seems to me that I have not found a way to impose keeping all of the sheds. So that's where I am at the moment, and I'm sure it will get no applause, but that is an honest opinion about what is necessary in order to move the project forward, so.
All right, so maybe I'll look at this slightly different. I kind of broke it down into, what are the variances being requested in the one design waiver? So to me, the easiest side is the design waiver. Are parking consultants comfortable with nine-by-18 instead of nine-by-19? I'm comfortable with that as well. So then the first variance is parking within the front yard. Looking at this site, I don't know how you could not have parking in the front yard here with street frontages on four sides essentially. I don't know how you get around that. So, unless you kind of build like a false building around most everything and try and park it on the inside, which I think would look a little silly. So for me, I can see that as a C1 hardship variance, and I'm okay with that. I don't really like the idea of having parking in the front yard, in the C1 zone, in the downtown. I, I just think it looks off, but I don't know how else to address it at this site. So then I come down to the parking variance, and the number of public, number of parking spaces and the relief required. And I, I look through what is a C2 variance, and whether or not the, you know, the purposes and municipal land use law would be advanced by this variance. Can the variance be granted without substantial detriment to the public good? And are the benefits of the deviation substantially outweigh any detriment? And will the variance not substantially impair the intent purposes of its own plan and zoning ordinance? So for me, I start to look at, you know, what is the substantial detriment here? And does this rise to that occasion? I, I don't like seeing historical structures destroyed. I spent a lot of time looking at, or listening to the testimony, and also looking at some of the nomination forms. And the, I didn't find Dr. Bedford's testimony all that compelling, personally. But when I look at the National Registry nomination, to me, it stands out that the box for building was checked, but not site. And so I'm trying to put myself in the mindset of, what, what was somebody thinking in 1972? Were they thinking that it's the entire site, train sheds, stanchions, tracks, you name it? Or were they talking about just one building, meaning the waiting room? And as I look through the nomination report, to me, they seem to really focus a lot on how special this building is. And they go to great lengths to describe the different windows and the ornamental grill work. And it just doesn't seem to me that the train sheds and the stanchions are necessarily historic, at least by what I'm reading in the 1972 nomination report. So I'm, I'm happy that the waiting room is remaining, but, and I think it's a reasonable compromise to keep 74 of the train sheds, or, sorry, stanchions. I don't know if I really like putting them in the parking lot for light posts, I think it might end up looking a little hokey, but I see that as a reasonable compromise. So I, that's kind of about where I'm falling at the moment. I don't know if I would say that the, yet, that the benefit substantially outweighs the detriment, because there's still considerations of traffic and other items, but I think it's a reasonable compromise to keep most of the stanchions, even though I'm not really sure if the stanchions are actually part of the designation.
From HBC, you know, the ticket building or the, the original building should remain intact, all sides, including those that are currently hidden under the renovations that they did in the 80s. That's gotta stand. The head of platform, which is the area that has the green terracotta roof, that's gotta stand. The glass storefronts in front of it, that was an addition, because that was totally open. I think that the train platforms itself, you know, the, the existing rails are probably right underneath there, they probably just covered everything over. We could open up a small section and use it as an archaeological dig and show people this is what was here in relation to these train platforms. The existing canopy and column should remain as much as possible, but this is an adaptive I think that we should, and while we're keeping some of the columns, I think where we can leave or put up roofs to show that they were actual canopies, like above the parking but not the drivials, or something like that, that would look fine. And it also gives, if you did it to all, all of the rows, it kind of visually makes that parking lot look smaller. The, you know, we've got a lot of these columns that are gonna go away. I think that they can be used all over the site. I suggested that we use them at the entrances of the apartment building, the two entrance, two major entrances, and I think you could do it over the garage entrance in the back, which seems to be kind of forgotten, where a lot of people are gonna be going back and forth. The tunnel, tunnels always scared me. I never liked that tunnel. I think that somebody's gotta do something with it. You can use these, these canopies along Glen Ridge Avenue or Bloomfield Avenue. The, the important thing is to keep them on the site, because who knows in 50 years what's gonna be on the site? Maybe they can rebuild them, put them back into place. Parking is a real problem. I don't quite understand how the eastern parking lot is to be used or secured. Some of it seems to be out in the wild, some of it seems to be locked up. It, it just doesn't make any sense to me. I think that the whole thing should be as open as possible with, you know, we have a walkway going from Lackawanna Plaza to the parking lot or to the grocery store, I think we could, a little wider. Make it more of a pedestrian street rather than kind of a dark hallway. I'd like to see some access from Glen Ridge Avenue, but I have no idea how that would work, if you're coming through the truck parking and things like that. But the important thing is that all sides of the project should be friendly. You know, most grocery stores have one front, and they have service on the sides and the rear, but they don't have streets all around them. And this one does. So we shouldn't have any blank walls anywhere. It should have, you know, it's a challenge, but we, this is an opportunity to have a real destination and a place to congregate. And a really good grocery store in that location should be a pleasing experience, and also fulfill the shopper's needs.
Yes, so, I agree with much of what I've heard thus far, especially Keith, I think the way that you're balancing kind of what's in the most interest of the community has kind of been where I've been looking at this. Unfortunately, we did lose much of the context in the 80s when it comes to historic preservation of the. preservation of the site. My concern is losing more of that context through further action. And so, of course, balancing that piece. And so I think we do need to preserve as much as possible. And I do believe that applicants compromised with us quite well in order to do that. So I've been encouraged by some of the changes. I think my greatest points of concern that still remain is just as mentioned, we've not activated Glen Ridge, and we've really not activated access from Grove for those that don't live in the building, but maybe parking in the East Parcel. I know we mentioned that on March 12. We've discussed the Eastment. It came up earlier tonight. But I think that still is a pretty big issue when you're thinking about access to the site at this point, really just from where we have Lackawanna Plaza through that tunnel, and then really from kind of Bloomfield, and if you're above ground from Grove Street, but not from the East Parcel. So we can get into how we resolve that, but I see that as one piece that still remains a concern for me. Other than that, I think the compromises that have taken place around historic preservation and providing what the community needs have been as good as I can see at this point. So I think it's really access that is a one piece that still is of concern.
Well, I guess I would be swayed by Martin's argument, because it kind of jives with my own. I think that the applicant bought this property knowing that it was a key property in an historic district in a town that values history. It was on the National, Local, and State Register of Historic Buildings. Presumably, people who looked at the application for registry on those sites were also of the same kind of caliber that a Dr. Bedford would be. They had one witness who, you know, kind of repeatedly tried to undermine the beauty and the value of this site based on justice testimony, and I kind of resent that. When I first walked into Lackawanna Plaza, because I lived five blocks away in the Fourth Ward, it, I was wowed by the site. You walked down, you certainly do seem like you were walking into a train station. It had this skylights, and you descended into the area. It had railings that kind of were reminiscent of a train station. Having been a New York commuter most of my life, I said, wow, this is really pretty cool. Of course, the building, the waiting room is gorgeous, but we're not really talking about that. In my view, we're talking about keeping the whole site as it is and adaptively reusing it for a supermarket. I love the idea of Lidl being our tenant there, but I think that we need to keep the whole site as it is without tearing down, demolishing the train sheds. There were many also, the last time we had public hearing, 70% of the people who spoke there were against demolition of the train sheds. So you have, we have our own Historic Preservation Commission. We have Barton Ross, our architectural consultant. We have the consultant that was hired by the HPC, all saying that this is a valuable historic asset to the town. To me, you know, it kind of, you come down the hill when you're driving, and you see the train station spread in front of you. There's a parking lot in front of you, but think about that parking lot being doubled in size. You really, it's going to take away from the view of you have, that you have of the train, the waiting room. So I really, I'm really against demolition of the train sheds. Just, you know, if you visualize the site, it's really, what they want to build is too big. They want to build a big apartment building in a place that's, really has low-rise housing around it. The apartment building demands a certain amount of parking. The supermarket and the other retail uses demand a certain amount of parking. If you think about the residential building, it's about four times the size of the recently constructed Monclerion II. That's 40 units, in terms of units. I'm not sure about square footage, but in terms of units, almost four times the size of Monclerion II, which is a big building. It's about the same size as the residence at Bay Street. So this is going to be a really big building that'll be on that site and the corresponding parking to go with it. I thought that an idea to help the situation would be to make all the parking spots underneath the building in the garage, make them reserved for the tenants, and let the public use the tunnel and go through and have access to the retail site. That, to me, I don't understand why the applicant is so against that. It worked well for 30 years. That's the way I would come in. It also helps people who want to walk. I also think, as I think it was Keith who said, that taking these stanchions and dropping them in the parking lot, that doesn't do anything for me. It seems like that would be rather weird and not an attractive architectural feature. I just think it'd be kind of strange. At the community visioning meetings that were also mentioned, one of the, one of the things was to make Lackawanna Plaza less of a barrier. I don't think that's been done in this site. You can't, you're only accessing it, as my colleague here said, Glen Ridge Avenue is not activated, Grove Street is not activated. So the master plan had five big ideas, and we have to compare the application and compare to what our master plan wants. They had five big ideas that they mentioned. Direct future growth and development, transit-oriented, mixed-use nodes within the township. Yes, this does that. Implement zoning revisions and new land use controls in select areas using form-based code or similar standards that allow increased density and/or improved build environment. I really don't know what that means, but there will be more density. And then the third one is conserve neighborhood form and character. And, you know, that's, we're not conserving our neighborhood if we're getting rid of this main attraction, which is this, you know, this train station in all its aspects. And you want to make, the other one is improve connectivity between neighborhoods and nodes. So they took away the connectivity with, when we don't allow the public to use the tunnel. They had an opportunity to activate Glen Ridge Avenue. Once again, they didn't do that. Grove Street is not really activated, just a staircase and a ramp going down into a parking lot. And their loading dock, even the next-door neighbor said it's far too large, and it takes away use of that sidewalk, basically, for people who, you know, want to walk down Glen Ridge Avenue on the south side. So I just believe that it's out of sync with the, what the master plan proposes. I think that, I've kind of lost faith in consultants. I feel like it's common sense that if you're going to have much more residential, people living in the buildings, their guests coming, a supermarket, it's going to impact traffic. And our traffic consultant says it's not going to have a serious impact on traffic. Of course it is. That's just common sense. And I also think that the turning patterns, you know, if you're going to be turning, and I don't even think this has been kind of confirmed, in my view, that you can absolutely make a left-hand turn into the front of the building from Bloomfield Avenue when there's a double line. That seemed to have come up again and again. I'm not satisfied that we've really answered that. We have a member of the public who said she received information from the police that says it's not allowed. Anyway, so I think that's a problem, turning in from Bloomfield Avenue and queuing to get into the lot from, you know, from Bloomfield to get in Grove. So, but my main issue, too, is I don't think valet parking is going to be, you know, it's really going to cause a problem on Glen Ridge Avenue. So the natural thing for valets to do is to come out of the lot, make a right-hand turn, and go through that little crane park where people are parked at an angle, go in, go onto Glen Ridge Avenue, make a right-hand turn, go down Glen Ridge Avenue, where you have a lot of people coming and going, getting out of their cars to go to the post office, then coming back and making short trips. And you're going to have, what I've seen with valet parking, it's young drivers who are in a hurry, because they want to get, drop off the car, get back, and then pick up cars. They work for tips, I guess, so I could see why they're in a hurry. I live near Mountainside Hospital. I see it all the time with the valet parkers there. So I think, you know, in terms of safety, Glen Ridge Avenue is made less safe by the use of valet parking for this project. So I really would be totally against the valet parking aspect, and that seems to be kind of what this is hanging its hat on, that we're going to approve this thing on the basis that Pro Park is going to be adequately handle the parking for this site. I really find that problematic. I mean, they have a lot of responsibilities. They have to valet park, in their testimony, they said 75 to 80 cars per day. The Mr. Heller, who owns the property at Greenwood Avenue, he said, what did he actually say? He says, just don't do it. Valet parking will not work, don't do it. That was his comment. And I can see why he would say that. It just seems really problematic, yet the site hangs its hat on being able to valet park these cars to allow the adequate parking. Also, Pro Park will have to monitor the west lot for misuse by non-patrons. They'll have to also monitor the lot for commuters. They'll have to monitor entry into the parking garage, manage the fobs, manage the, you know, manage the access. And once again, we're hanging our hat on this company being able to do that, and it, really, I find that problematic. So just in summary, I would not want to tear down the train sheds, and I would like to keep the, a smaller footprint. I think the apartment building is basically too big. I think it's out of character with the neighborhood. I think a medical office building is a more dense use of parking spots, and I don't like no access on Glen Ridge Avenue. That's another point, why they couldn't have a back door that activated some part of Glen Ridge Avenue. And I think the tunnel is something that they're taking, tunnel access is something they're taking away from the public, which is, you know, in my view, unconscionable.
No Tuesdays? No kidding. I said no Tuesdays.
We're deliberating.
I know, I know. We're still trying to be funny.
It's a moment of levity.
Yeah. Got to treat each other nicely, that's all.
I do not believe the public good is served by taking down this historic site. I particularly don't believe that it's served with a 400 parking spot variance. I believe that we can utilize a supermarket which is desired within the existing building and rework the location accordingly. I agree with my colleague that the, if the, if the result of knocking down the site means reducing the size of apartments offered, I believe that's the way to go. I think in years to come, we will regret tremendously making a decision today that we took down the site, as we always do in looking back, that we shouldn't have done it. It always seems prudent to make the decision now because of feasibility and need, but then when you look back, you go, no, that just wasn't the right thing to do. And I think we will pay for that down the road. And I would particularly, given my colleague who sits on the Historic Preservation Commission, I'm a little shocked when his, all his colleagues voted that this was not in keeping with the, with the edicts of preservation and the secretary's particulars, that he is ignoring that, but...
I'm sorry, I'm not ignoring it. Part of it is adaptive reuse.
I understand, but...
And part of that is demolition.
As I said, I, given the, given the position that the HPC has taken, I, I'm shocked that you've taken this position. But be it as it may, go back to my original points. I think we can have a supermarket here. We can work within what is a spectacular open space and rework it differently. I wish the applicant had worked it differently, but they've asked us to decide on this particular plan. That's the calling today, and I'm going to reluctantly, as much as I support adaptively reusing this site, as much as I support a supermarket, as much as I wanted this site to work, I'm going to have to vote no on this proposal.
Perhaps I misunderstand where we're headed here, but my comments regarding the, first of all, we're not taking down the whole site. We're talking about the stanchions, and I made a comment only with regard to that. That does not mean that I approve 100% of the parking plan or the management of it, and I thought those were discussions that we were going to, to separate out. So I don't know that we're voting at this moment on whether we reject the whole plan or whether or not we're trying to tweak the various aspects of it that are...
We've been, we've been asked to...
I guess I'm speaking to John at the moment.
I'm so sorry.
Right, right.
Well, it appears that, yeah, we did start out that way, Carol, but it appears that we have veered along a different course. And, you know, our colleagues have been making their position clear with respect to overall what they're inclined to do in terms of a larger vote. I think that, quite right, that there are a lot of other details that go into this site besides whether or not we take the stanchions down, that have to be ironed out, that we haven't discussed. And I think that there's a couple of different ways to handle those things, but, and since we're, we've gone down the, the road of expressing our overall view of the application, you know, we might as well continue to do that and then figure out the rest of it afterwards.
Just a point of procedure. The applicant specifically asked us to vote on their plan. I'm sorry. Point of procedure, the applicant asked us to vote on their plan, not to consider alternative plans. That was their call.
Martin, you can't have it both ways, okay? Okay? You can't have it both ways. There are, of course, when we deal with any application before us, yeah, we put conditions on the plan. We don't change the whole plan, which is what, a lot of what we're talking about, but we do put conditions on how certain portions of the plan should be dealt with, and I think that's what we're talking about.
But I think there are other reasons besides just the fact that the application includes demolishing the, the part of the historic structure that would mitigate against voting for this plan, in my view. The main one being the parking management and the valet parking, it just...
Right, and you, and you stated that.
Yeah, it's stated that. Yep.
But that was my point. Their plan hinges on those aspects, and they've asked us to vote up or down on that, not to redesign their plan, which, which then...
Right.
Could have happened, and, and yet, you know, at a certain point, they stopped engaging with our historic preservation consultant, for instance, and we stopped the back and forth. So they've asked us to vote on this plan today with, with the evidence and criteria and specifics they've proposed, not to redesign it with, with other elements, as we, as you correct, we normally do in other situations.
Right.
But that was, that, I distinctly remember the attorney saying that. Vote, vote on this plan, don't vote on any alternative plan.
Well, I think you're, you're drawing some artificial lines here.
So we're not, I agree 100%.
I'm not gonna, and I understand that.
Yeah.
I just disagree with it.
So what are we...
And I think that we have...
What are we thinking about, then? We're looking at this plan and tweaking it?
Well, why don't we, I mean, you're clearly, if I'm understanding the both of you, you're clearly not inclined to approve a plan that calls for any demolition, okay? I think that's an integral part of this plan. The parking situation, again, with respect to having a variance for a large number of parking spaces, to have somebody manage the parking, actively manage the parking on the spot, I think that's an integral part of the plan. The details, though, as to how that gets managed, I think is something that we can talk about. Because I'm not, I'm not talking about redesigning the entire parking plan. I'm talking about, basically, in my mind, I'm talking about how the parking is managed on the site. Because I don't see how the parking, given the, the geography and other factors, I don't see how it could be managed without active management and some valet element to it. And so, you know, that basic part of it, I'm willing to accept, although how they've talked about, where they've talked about putting the parking spaces, I, you know, I'm not sure exactly at this point that I'm exactly comfortable with that. But that's something that we could, that's a minor portion of it, and we could deal with that the same way that we deal with other details of applications after the fact.
I just think that the application could be rejected on more than one ground.
I understand.
Other than the demolition, it could be rejected on the parking management, valet parking.
We understand that, but it could also be approved.
The size of the buildings. There are certainly other things that could have been done that were not discussed.
It could also be approved.
So we will...
So Carol.
Oh, yeah. I just, just to understand, as far as the potential conditions, we would still discuss those before...
Well, here's the thing. Somebody has to make a motion.
Okay.
That motion presumably would include conditions. That's what we usually do. And there's usually a discussion about what those conditions would be for those people who, you know, are, are in favor of the... who, you know, are, are in favor of the motion, all right? But we haven't quite gotten to that point yet. And I know, again, going back to the issue that you raised, Carol, you know, it's, members of the board seem to have been stating all their reasons why, for their position, and basically giving, you know, very clear indication, one way or the other. So that's why we're going back around to kind of, you know, have, give everybody else the chance to say anything else if they want to.
I guess I have a concern, and the concern is, is that we, at one time, we had a redevelopment plan for the Lacuna Plaza, which we, or at least the council, we no longer have a redevelopment plan.
So that's irrelevant to our...
Right, it's irrelevant, right. So what we're left with is what the zoning ordinances that exist at the time of the application permit the builder to do. And I'm, I'm stuck with that as the basis for what the board is empowered to reject and what it's empowered to not reject. And therefore, that's why my comment related to the fact that the real debate has been, could we force the, a site to be a supermarket that is built within the, the existing sheds? Can we, that's, that's been the alternative plan that has been generated by public documents, which looked kind of exciting and pleasant to, to, as, as a solution. But we're not in a position to force that plan on anyone. And the plan that is before us is a different plan and is within the right of the builders to present the plan that's been before us. Yes, we have the option, because it is a historic site, of saying that we cannot do anything with the sheds. But since this is a plan that does everything else but retain all of the sheds, it does give us a lot of what we want as a town. It gives us the, the things which, as was pointed out, are the, the most attractive portions of the site, are all being supported and will be retained. I regret that we were not able to get a, a, a supermarket that was the kind of supermarket that was, would be using the sheds as its base and it's attractive, and it seemed like a very nice idea, but it's not the one that we were given as a choice. So I'm moving on with that. I'm saying that my support is that I am pleased that we're caping almost all of it and we have at least some way of using and recycling some of that which we would have liked to have kept in its present place. I reluctantly have to just accept that. But I do not accept that the management plan and all those other things are exactly where we want them to be. And I think that, I don't think one vote on, one resolution is going to take all those things and get what we need as a, as a decision. I think it's gonna have to be broken down into what we, the portions that we are negotiating agreement on. So I don't think one resolution, for me, is going to say that, you know, we're gonna not have valet parking. I, I do believe that the valet parking should not be in the west lot, but I don't think that I have to go on the sheds and that in the same resolution. That's, that's basically what I'm, what I'm concerned about.
It's one resolution.
Right.
It's one resolution. We have, we can impose conditions, but it's one application, it's one resolution, you can't approve this and not approve that.
I have, I have a question here, and maybe this is a time to bring back the supermarket company. If, if we rejected this plan and they had to go back to the drawing board and create a site that required effectively using bio-mission, required because we were not knocking down this historic structure, what would the reaction from his company be? If they had to, because he, he mentioned that he, that in, in Europe, they're working with existing buildings all the time. If he had to work with this existing structure and yet we still could provide parking, what would, what would the reaction be? Maybe that's something that he can, can answer.
I'm sure he can answer it. I don't know whether there's a, I don't know whether there's a point to answering a question like that, Martin, because what would you expect him to say? I mean, clearly, the, the, the question is posed in the context that if, if he tells us that they would consider, then we're gonna say no. And if he tells us that they, they're not going to consider, then something else could happen, you know? I mean, it's, it's...
I mean, I guess...
It's not a fair question. And again, it's not really relevant to whether or not the applicant has satisfied his legal duty under the municipal land use law to demonstrate that he's entitled to variances at the, at the property. Because that's our legal question.
As, as I stated my opinion on that already, but since we're moving...
Counselor, you wanna object to that? No, I cut you off.
You, you said what I would've said, but yeah, we, we, we object to having our prospective tenant answer.
Yeah. I don't think that we have, we will get any information from that that is gonna be useful for us to make a decision here.
I think the way that you would find out if they're, you know, if you rejected the application, then they would go back to the drawing board, perhaps.
Or they walk, or they walk away.
Or they walk away. They sell the property to somebody else and walk away.
Right.
Or they go back to the drawing board, having gone through 18 months of testimony and heard what the concerns are of the planning board and retail their, or re-review their, I'm sorry, redo their plan according to what they've heard, rather than trying to impose their plan on a board that might not be happy with it.
Well, I understand what you're saying, and yes, that is true, it could happen. Of course, this plan is very different from the plan that was originally presented to us. So it's not as if they haven't been reacting to the testimony and what's been, what has come up over the past year, you know, when we've been hearing these, when we've been hearing these items. But, you know, unfortunately...
That's a good point. Things that we've heard were impossible, that they never could do, and, and we couldn't save that and couldn't retain that, now suddenly are in this plan. And so, we're basically being told that, you know, we have to take down these elements from the building, but supposing we say no? And, you know?
Well, I mean, you know, if we say no, then it's, of course, on the applicant to, you know, do whatever they're going to do after that. Personally, I don't see that anybody is going to get everything that they want in this situation. If a supermarket, how long has the building been vacant? If a supermarket was going to come into this building, as it is, as it stands now, I mean, when it was completely viable, because it hadn't been unoccupied for so long, and if it was such a hot property for a supermarket to come in, it would've been occupied by now.
Well, no, I disagree with that.
Let me finish, please.
It could've had a pop-up.
Let me finish, please. I mean, you know, we, we really, we've got another Haynes property here. You know, that could, that could basically remain undeveloped because nobody wants to develop it as we, or as we hear on, in this situation, have, have dictated it needs to develop. But, you know, the, this is private property, it's private funding, it's the applicant's right to develop it as they want to develop it, of course, within the guidelines of zoning. And they, they're asking us for certain variances. And that's what gives us the opportunity to make a decision here. And we've seen a lot of change to this, and yeah, I, I recognize that too, that, yeah, things that we were told impossible became possible. But again, I, at the end of the day, I don't see where everybody is going to get everything that they want. I don't, there's just, I think there's too much space on, on everything. And because there's not enough parking, there's not enough space for, for residential development, there, for the residential development that they want to put on the property, there has to be some give and take between the elements. And I think we have seen that. And I think there is, unfortunately, and it's not that I'm 100% happy about it, but, you know, I, I see the need for a compromise here. Certain things are worth compromising, certain things aren't. You know, and the thing that I keep hearing that really bugs me the most is that, you know, we're getting rid of the structure, we're getting rid of the structure, we're not getting rid of the structure. Nobody is proposing to get rid of the structure. It's some, some of the train sheds, and that's what we're talking about.
I think one of our...
And the original building, and the original building that we're talking about, this train station, there was no train station as you're talking about enclosed, I mean, because the, the atrium, the mall, that was all after constructed. All the different levels, that was after constructed. That's why part of the stanchions are buried in concrete, because the stanchions were, were, the, the ground level was much lower than the existing building. And, you know, so, there is not a historic element to the mall, other than the fact that there are pieces of the original train station used in it.
That's just, that's just absolutely wrong.
But let me finish, please. Let me finish, please. No, let me finish, please. I don't have a limit on the amount of time that I, that we can talk here. I don't put a limit on your time, Martin. So, the, the stanchions that are there are a very small percentage of what goes into that, has what goes into that mall space. You know, all the glass, that's all after the fact, that's, there is no historic character to that. You know? It's, that was added in the, in the 80s when it was, when it was renovated. So, you know, we're not talking about getting rid of the structure, we're talking about getting rid of the stanchions. And that's where I see the compromise factor. Go ahead, Martin. I'm done.
I disagree with that completely. The building was renovated in the 80s as a adaptive reuse restoration. There are unfortunately tacky storefronts in there, but the overall structure was preserved. We can work with it and effectively bring it back. And to knock those, the portions of the structure down now is a mistake. We can have a supermarket within that at, at multiple footprints, and we can provide the parking, but I think the, the core concept here has to be to preserve the site and work the parking and everything else accordingly. And in not doing that, as I said, I think we will make a grave mistake. The 400 space parking variance requested is not within the public good unless the site is preserved. Otherwise, we're giving them a bunch of apartments, letting them knock down a historic property for what? We can have a supermarket, we can have the site, I think it has to be looked at differently, and we're just going around robbing here.
I agree 100%, Martin. I think you're absolutely right.
Excuse me?
Should we discuss conditions?
Motion to reject the plan as presented.
Second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
I'd also like to say, why is the planning board always like content with like this banal kind of nondescript architecture in this town? Here we have the opportunity to have a beautiful building that, but we go, you know, we are gonna be bookended with...
So now you're gonna attack us?
Well, I guess...
You're, you're, no, you're attacking us.
Sorry, excuse me.
You're attacking us.
All right, I, I take that back. I don't mean to attack you. I'm talking in like rhetorical question. Why would we be content not to use a site that has a, you know, integral beauty to itself and not to make, you know, try to have the applicant use it to the fullest, not demolishing parts of it? But, I mean, one of our public said, said the same thing. How can you have a historic castle and take away the moat? How can you have a barn and take away the silo? How can you have a historic mill and take away the water wheel? That's what we're doing here. That's, and I think that we have the opportunity to make this into something beautiful with the right developer.
I don't happen to think it's that extreme.
Extreme?
Extreme, yeah. I don't happen to think that it's that extreme as you describe it, you know? So we, we basically, we're just, we have a different opinion. You know, I don't think that the planning board takes pride in approving banal proposals and, you know, trying to basically ruin the public and ruin the flavor of the town. I mean, I don't think anybody sits up here and does that.
No, I, of, of course not. But we have beautiful buildings in this town, we just saw one of them being destroyed, knocked down. I mean, how can we let that happen if we have any kind of leverage to not let it happen? That's, that's really my point.
Because, because sometimes...
And here we are, presented in front of us, a, a building that's on three historic sites, it's a key site within a historic district, and we're talking about letting them demolish part of it. And I, I think that's outrageous.
A small part. I think it's, I think it's a small part of it. And I think sometimes there's a trade-off to get something else, that sometimes you have to trade off other things. That's, that's how, that's how you do it. That's how I see it.
I believe we can have...
So, I, right, I think...
You want me to call the roll?
Sure.
Okay. This is a motion to deny. Chair Wynn?
No.
Vice Chair Brodak?
No.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Willis?
No.
Mr. Rooney?
No.
Ms. Lockman?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmer?
No.
Okay.
All right. So...
Now what I recommend is we discuss conditions and then we can make a positive motion.
Let's see if we can get conditions, that will help.
I'd love to take a break at some point.
It's, why don't we take a break now?
Okay.
All right, thank you. Five minutes. Five minutes.
I think, yeah, Liam.
Are we back on the record?
We are back on the record.
Okay, all right. So, Mr. Galvin was very kind to put together a list of issues that we had discussed over the course of this hearing. It's not, may not be comprehensive, but it's a good starting place to talk about issues with the, with the application that we want to address. So why don't we run through what we've got here?
First one, tractor-trailer deliveries shall be restricted to avoid peak hours.
Shouldn't you be more specific as to what those peak hours are?
Do you want to tell me?
I don't know, but I think we should find out what are peak hours.
Is that something that we can have a plan presented to us, you know, in terms of delivery? Can we go that route? That since we, since we have a definite tenant.
I think, I think we were thinking about the, I think the testimony was regard, regarding the street and when the street's busy.
Right, and peak hours, and they're talking about peak hours.
And peak hours relates to the, uh, peak hours in the traffic.
What peak hours are, I just think we should identify what specific hours we're talking about rather than just being vague. How do you, I mean, a legal document, you define everywhere, so what's peak hour?
I work myself back to it, I'm positive that peak hours are the hours in the traffic, in the traffic study that they, they tell us when the peak hours are.
But let's, let's, um...
AM and PM peak hours.
Well, I think that Carrie Heller had mentioned no deliveries between certain hours, I forget what they were, and he's the, he owns obviously the property in Greenwood Avenue, so is very familiar with the traffic situation there, and I think he gave test, he gave testimony that identified some hours, I just don't remember what they were.
So why don't we have the condition call for a plan, a delivery plan, to be presented that can be reviewed by our review committee?
We're talking about the tractor-trailer deliveries, Mr. Trout.
Right, so that we're, so that everybody's on the same page as to what peak hours are and what peak hours aren't.
And I guess which vehicles we're talking about. Mr. Heller also mentioned there's going to be an awful lot of the little box trucks, panel trucks going in and out all day. I mean, I don't know if we want to regulate those or not.
No, I didn't think, in my opinion, based on what I heard, it would, tractor-trailers were the concern at that point in here.
And just to, Mr. Heller said perhaps we should restrict loading hours to 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct, yeah. So is that what we want to go with in this condition, or do we want to go back and...
Why don't we have that time condemned and request a plan as the chair suggested at the same time?
I like that idea, I mean, since we have the operator here, you know, he can hear this and perhaps put together some sort of typical plan, or Mr. Troutner, you have...
So, well, with respect to the, the delivery peak hours, we're obviously fine with, you know, coming to the revisions committee to, to discuss it, I think hours were kicked around, I don't remember exactly what they are, but...
Right, and that's why we can go back and review the record specifically for that.
We can get that out, the, the, but the, the restriction on overnight loading, I, I know that was something that Mr. Heller stated, but that wasn't something that the applicant agreed to.
Oh, we're going to pose it. Ha ha. You don't get to say everything like that, we get, we can impose reasonable conditions.
Well, he's, he was restricting it to only overnight delivery. Are we on, is that what you said? I thought you said restricting.
I, I just was making the point to, and that the applicant had previously agreed to restrict trailer deliveries to avoid peak hours, and obviously we can figure out what peak hours mean, but I was making the point that we, that while Mr. Heller had mentioned that he would like overnight loading to be avoided, that that wasn't in a condition that the applicant had previously agreed to.
No, I guess what I'm saying is, I think Mr. Heller was saying it should be deliveries overnight, not avoid it. That's why, I mean, I don't know if we need to debate it right now, I like the idea of coming up with a plan, but just so, you're hearing what I'm saying, I think, because I think we missed each other.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, Mr. Brown, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I misunderstood, and possibly I misspoke.
Okay.
All right. Oftentimes people don't want deliveries to occur overnight.
Right.
But we do, is that where...
Well, I'm just saying, that's what, I just want to, I wrote down what Mr. Heller said, that's why, you know, we kept bringing up what Mr. Heller recommended, and I just wanted to be clear, what he said was have loading only 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. But I like the idea of, let's get a plan.
We don't necessarily have to agree with Mr. Heller, but the theory seems good.
I'm not sure that, that restricting it only to those overnight hours, you know, is practical.
The, so, functionally, just so I'm clear, so the tractor-trailer, the tractor-trailer deliveries being restricted to avoid peak hours as well as the plan for loading is something to be, well, for the plan and will presented to revisions committee.
Right, right.
Who's on the revisions committee? Martin?
And Steve.
And Steve.
Okay, number two. The applicant will provide plantings to screen the above-ground transformer, but also leave room to provide access for any type of maintenance. Okay. The next one is, was hard for me, because I didn't, I, I am having trouble following it.
Let's, let's come back to that.
Okay. That's, that, okay, sorry, they're just in the order, I wrote them down. Four, the applicant is to provide two alternative seating plans for the outdoor seating in the alley, to be approved by the plans revision committee, one for the restaurants using the new retail space, and another for the other businesses that are using it.
And I think we have to have a revised plan for not just that, for the actual space usage, since it's not going to be all, the supermarket area that was originally depicted on the plan is not going to be all supermarket now, that there may be one or two other tenants, so we need to know what's going in there, and what it's going to look like. And again, I think, I think the revisions committee can handle that.
John, if I could just give a point. If we were staying with the plan as was before, I was going to object to creating that secondary soup, uh, secondary restaurant next to the Pig and Prince, because I believe that added substantial more parking and parking turnover that the site with the variance, variances presently requested could not accommodate. Now we've got a smaller supermarket and additional space, so how would we handle that? In other words, can we impose conditions of how many restaurants? I think too much turnover, given, again...
I think, I think we can tie it to the parking variance, because the restaurant uses have a different parking requirement.
Yeah.
And right now, right now, the parking plan called, is supermarket or retail, and supermarket and retail has the same parking requirement, but if it, and that's from, the variance would cover that, if they go to more restaurants, you'd have to come back for a, for a parking variance.
I'm just, I'm just concerned, we add more restaurants, more turnover, you know, certain, certain types of businesses flip over and have a lot of parking.
Janice is saying you can't, because if you're going to come in a restaurant, you're going to trigger a variance, you're going to come back and report.
So it's capped, it's capped at the, the rest, number of restaurant seats, it's part of this application.
Okay, so, we're going to deal with that at the...
No, actually, they would have to make a new application for a variance.
Correct.
If they wanted to change beyond what's already provided in this plan, because it's capped with the current restaurant-retail mix.
We, we're going to expect the other 15,000, 16,000 square feet to be something else, another retail store.
But you're talking about the fast food site, right?
My, my point was...
The fast food site is already included, though.
It is included in the zone, in the table.
What I'm, what I'm saying is that I had a problem with that additional 1,800 square feet, added fast food site into the, because that wasn't there originally when, when it was proposed, and, and there's a 400-spot variance requested anyway, I, I had a big problem with that, I just thought that put it over the top significantly, and so now we've got additional space to deal with.
Yeah, that's 72 spaces.
I think that the...
Yeah, I mean, that just, and quick turnover spaces.
The, the fast food restaurant proposal, did that increase the parking requirement?
It did.
Yes.
And in terms of the parking, in terms of the variance requested, did it alter that?
The, well, the fast food restaurant creates, created the need for 36 spaces, I don't have how many...
We need to mitigate that and reduce the intensiveness of, with that addition. They found 1,800 square feet, that's fine, we need to somehow not have, you know, major space and quick turnover needs created as a result of that.
I think you can put that into, I mean, if you, I know what you're saying, Martin, is you don't want to approve the additional space for the fast food restaurant.
That's correct.
I, I would, I would suggest that the board, whether or not you approve that or not, I would suggest that you put language in the resolution that any deviation or increase in the parking demand for this would require them to come before the board, because the ordinance doesn't require, require that, the resolution should.
So the parking demand, as it's presented, prior to the addition of the restaurant, is what we are enforcing, is what we're going to approve?
Yes, correct, that's good.
So, if, if, well, if you want, you, if you want to take out the, the 72 seats for that fast food restaurant, which is, I gather, 1,800 feet, and put it back to retail.
Yes.
And if it were retail at 1,800 feet, it would require nine, nine spaces.
As opposed to 36.
Thirty-six.
Right.
But it's also the quick turnover and the amount of cars in and out of there as a result of that.
Understood.
Given the site already with the...
Right.
I just don't think it could, I, I felt that at the time, I would have opposed it then, and, okay, good.
Excuse me, but we're a little confused here. So we made, we made a point that we had one small, quick food, you call it fast food in your ordinance, we're not calling it that, because this entire center has no place for anybody to get something to eat except a supermarket and office, and we're not looking to increase that at all, and we agree that if there were any restaurants to be added next to the supermarket, we'd have to come back, we're not disagreeing with that at all. But I make sure I'm understanding what you're saying, and Mr. Schwartz is saying, that we're not talking about taking away something that we had already included in our plan, that would be, we think something we would object to.
Well, you added 1,800 square feet to the original plan.
And incorporated that into our parking plan, which is accepted by Mr., excuse me, which is accepted by Mr. Geosa.
That's great, that he accepted it, I don't accept it.
I understand, that's a problem.
The intensity of the use from that, from the, the nature of what you were proposing there, I think is too intensive, given the variance you're already requesting. So I'm not opposing to use the retail space, I'm suggesting you find a different use for it, or potentially, as many supermarkets do, they have a hot food area, like you go into ShopRite in, in Bloomfield, and you can have...
With all due respect, you're redesigning, we have, we need to have, we believe for the viability of this center, we need to have a place where people can get something quick to eat, and it's not a supermarket. It's very small, it's only a small area, and I don't think anybody had a problem with that.
You've got fast food-type places there now with Popeyes and pizza and this and that, right?
Those stores are not going to be there.
Right, but, well, now I'm confused.
I'm sorry, I am too, that's why I asked.
Okay, how, how many fast food-type places do you anticipate?
The total square footage, I think, is 1,800? 1,800 square feet, it can't be any more than that.
I'm talking about the whole site, how many do you anticipate?
That's it, just one, just one store.
Because the other, the other will be retail.
Correct.
And then the other food restaurant use is the Pig and Prince.
Correct.
So there will be no Popeyes, no pizza, no, so you're asking for one?
There's one, you have to pick one and that's it.
I thought you were adding a new one on to...
No, that's why I wanted to ask.
Remember, those are all gone, those are gone.
Yeah, I understand, but, but, so we're going, we're going to approve effectively one fast food-type place?
Per your code, and one restaurant in the train.
Okay, my point is withdrawn.
Thank you.
Five, the applicant is to remove the snow from the supermarket loading area when it interferes with turning movements. Six, all the commercial...
Wait a minute, um, I, I also think that's a little vague, are they going to, they're going to take the snow and take it off-site?
When it interferes with turning movements or parking of vehicles?
Not just turning movements, the box trucks that come in and out as well. The snow when it snows has to be, has to be taken off-site, because there's no place to push it, that was Mr. Heller's point.
We, we also just, I'm sorry to add one thing to that, after talking further with Carrie and talking to some other folks we know, we're either going to remove it off-site, which we do all the time, and I have a previous experience with franchise restaurants, which is what we always did, or we may install a melting system, if we can figure that out for the loading dock area, so it'll either be removed, or it'll be never there, so as long as...
So accumulated snow will be removed?
Correct, that's a good way of putting it, thank you.
Would you melt that into the stream? There's a stream right there.
It goes into the storm.
I think it goes into the 72-inch, I'm looking at Mr. Webb, but...
If it's possible, we just want that option.
But I think it ultimately ends up, does it end up, I don't know, I think it ultimately ends up in the stream.
Same place it'd go if it rained.
Yeah.
But your words are best, any accumulated snow will be removed immediately.
Removed.
Off-site.
Yes, off-site.
Six, all, all the commercial leases are to require all employees, with the exception of doctors, to park on the east side of the project.
That was not, the doctors are parking on the east side of the project in the, in the garage, is that what the plan was? So it's all employees, including the doctors, would park on the east side?
That's correct.
Yeah, and the doctors, I guess, have reserved parking or something?
I must have heard it wrong. So, all the employees are to park on the east side of the project?
That's correct.
Yes, okay.
East lot, yeah.
And this would prevent them from specifying spots for doctors in that Wachong Plaza lot? That's correct.
But they have to park, they can't park there.
Since we're on the parking right now, I wanted to add some, just focus on the table. It seems to me, because of the intensity of the parking here, that we really can't have any ability to park trucks and buses from the Wellmont and take up any public parking in this lot, and I think that should be made a condition, particularly since it's the same owner or partial same owner, and how are we going to deal with parking to the public at night, given the parking variance? How are we going to, so let's handle one thing at a time, no ability to park trucks and buses from the Wellmont in, in this area, and to take up public parking, I think that...
Just to address that, so you may not remember, there's a bus parking garage being built next to Wellmont.
Understood.
Mr. Mr. Schwartz, maybe I could suggest what Mr. Geosa had written into his report, that the applicant manages the property, so no non-project parking activity is taking place on either parcel. Like that's what Mr. Geosa had said, based on his conclusions or the, the firm's conclusions, the parking supply would be sufficient if the following occurs.
You're saying no third-party, you want, or no third-party?
No non-project parking activity.
So nothing that's not related to this, this site? So I think that's a better way to put it.
At any, at any, any hour of the day.
Except for the high school graduation, we're letting them park there this June.
Project won't be active in June unless you have a miracle building.
No, I don't think so.
Just since we're talking about Mr. Geosa's report, his conclusion is in quotes, "Based on our calculations, the proposed parking supply will be sufficient to accommodate parking demand generated by the project, provided, one, the parking management plan is executed as described in the parking study and the parking management plan, the parking supply is not reduced by snow piles or non-corralled shopping carts, the applicant manages the property, so, so non-project activity is taking place on either parcel." So, with that contingency...
And the restaurant will not have a bar or lounge for the application?
But they do, but they do have, that's, they do have a bar and a lounge, so I think, but whatever, so, I feel like this, you know, this plan's contingent on valet parking, which I believe is dangerous on Glenridge Avenue. Mr. Geosa's conclusion says to me that, that only if the site is perfectly managed, will there be adequate parking, there's no margin of error. This quote, "perfect management scenario" seems unlikely at best, and is subject to such high management standards that I am not convinced it can be achieved. I cannot agree to a project where the success or failure is contingent upon a third-party parking company. So, I, and you know, I, December is expected to be the month of peak parking demand, it's also the month where snow might be expected, and there's no margin of error in having pro-park manage this. Do we all, I mean, do we think that's reasonable? And how can we, I mean, how do you address that?
I think that the parking plan in and of itself, all parts of it, need to be looked at a little closer, and I think it might be warranted to have some changes. at a little closer, and I think it might be warranted to have some changes made to the plan, and I would submit that, you know, we, that the condition be that the parking management be looked at by the review committee. The review committee can work with our parking experts, and it can be tweaked and examined a little bit more thoroughly, so that they satisfy the review committee that the plan can actually work.
And the, the one change that I think I saw in the most recent parking management plan was that they have to offer, the applicant has to offer valet during a certain specified time, or at any time where it's needed.
Yeah.
Which, which I like that there's some flexibility, but I don't know how that gets enforced.
Yeah.
That's where I struggle a bit with it. I think it's a good ideal, and I think it hopefully will make some sense, but how do you enforce that?
Yeah, plus it strikes me that Pro Park is gonna have to have like a little army of people monitoring the parking lots, parking the cars back and forth, they're not close, it's not like Mountainside Hospital, the parking is right across the street for the most part. You're gonna have, and they're generally young drivers, in my view, when I see Mountainside Hospital. To me, it's very problematic.
I think it may be difficult to pull off.
Yeah.
But you, they may need a small army of people to do it well. I, I don't, see, that's the thing, is I, if it works well, great, and if it doesn't, I don't know what the enforcement mechanism is to say, ah, you should've had a fourth person running cars instead of three. Who's gonna come up with that, and how does that?
Well, how does it affect the cost, for one thing? So, if you, how does it affect the cost of valet parking? I mean, if you need a small army of people, they're gonna charge for the valet parking. If they charge for valet parking, people won't wanna use it, and they'll try to park in the streets, and it'll affect the neighborhood. You're gonna have, like Crosby's, Crosby's all over the neighborhood, we're gonna have that all over the neighborhood if it doesn't work. And I think, I don't know how you address that issue.
Well, when there's a parking deck across the street, I think you'll have a better read of the Crosby's situation, where right now there's no, I mean, it's transitional for, for that spot.
Right.
But, you know, at a certain point, if people can't park, they don't like coming there, it's uncomfortable, they go elsewhere, and the market will speak, and if they're losing business because people can't park, well then, you know-
Doctors' patients will be complaining to them that they can't park their car, they can't get to see their doctor?
No, I think, what I'm, what I'm saying is it's affecting the neighborhood, because you're having people who, they'll still come to the doctor's office, that they'll park in the streets and it-
First, I mean, there is some feedback mechanism, people, they start to hear, wait a minute, I can't park, you know, it's not like it comes out of the blue. I think you have to let the business operate a little bit in that regard. You have to, you have to give them room to fail, that's what I'm trying to say, you know. And then if it's not working, you know, rest assured, people will jump in and complain.
Next, are you okay?
I am, I'm just thinking, no, we haven't-
I, I think that the, that's a pretty big task, but I don't know if the reins of discretion and the divisions committing to it are too strict, but I think that we do have an issue, and I have been concerned that the substantial size of the parking area is presenting a pretty tight situation.
Well, I think that they, what, what happens in the committee is that if the committee's not satisfied that it can work, then we refer it back to the, it comes back here.
Right.
To be reexamined.
Yep, just note, once again, it's seventy-five to eighty cars a day, people pulling in, then people four in and out.
Makes you feel any better Martin's on the committee.
I'll defer to you if you wanna come to the parking.
If you would, if you would, and it really, if you wanna be a part of the committee, that's, that can be arranged.
I can't, then we'll have a quorum, we'll have a quorum.
Then somebody sits, moves off the, the table for that ease.
I'm happy to serve.
But you're right, that it's not a ringing endorsement from Mr. Geosa's documents.
No, I thought it's, it's very, I thought it wasn't an endorsement by the conditions that he imposed, that it wasn't endorsing this in his own way.
Well, part, part of, part of, again, in understanding that, there's, this isn't the first time that, that we've had a situation that an approval relies on a very specifically managed parking system. And, you know, I don't know whether, I, I don't know whether Mr. Geosa felt that there was more room for error in those other ones, or for some reason that this one just wouldn't work unless there's perfection, you know, but in any case, I think that as a, as a reality of situation, that, you know, the proposals for very highly managed parking have to be closely monitored and have to be watched, because there's, there's no telling or predicting exactly what's gonna happen once you start putting things into operation. You know, these plans are based on calculations and assumptions and projections, and very often those things change. You, you wind up having to account for things that you didn't know how you could account for them. And we'll have to figure out, we'll have to make sure that we monitor, I think we'll need to maybe also include in this plan, you know, some sort of reporting, so that at least for the initial first few years, as we've done with other projects, that we have some feedback, or that there's a mechanism for feedback, to make sure that what's going on is actually working. And if it stops working, then it needs to, it needs to be revised.
Which reminds me that we need to take a better look at number five, because my understanding was is that the snow was gonna be removed from the parking lots in total, not just from the loading area, that there was not going to be allowed, that snow would be taking up parking spaces. So, I, my understanding is we're supposed to haul the snow away anywhere from the parking, not just the loading area.
Right, okay.
Point, yep.
What we had said, I think, is in the loading area, there's no tolerance for, there's no place to have it at all. And I think what we said in the, as the main parking lot, is that we wouldn't allow it to interfere and obviously-
Well, there's no place for it in the main parking lot at all either, that's my point.
But I think the question is, is that in the main parking lot, there won't be 100% usage?
Correct.
Well, there will be, supposedly, people, this is December.
Considering the amount of parking.
If it snows in December?
Right, so December is a, like you said, they won't allow it to interfere with the parking, but maybe in January, February, March, maybe it's not really necessary. So, I think that's the-
I'm a little concerned about that. I think that the issue of snow taking up parking spaces is an issue twelve months out of the year, not just in December. And that I really, I think that we should stick with the original discussion, which was that there would not be snow accumulating there in the parking lot. We can't be parking spaces short, we really can't.
All right.
So, tractor-trailer shall only make right turns, not left turns, onto Glen Ridge. There shall also be appropriate signage on Glen Ridge, that is to be reviewed and approved by the board's engineer. Next, the plant shall-
Can I just go back?
Sure, but jump in before I go to the next one, okay?
Yep.
That's all I ask.
Yep, I just wanted, sorry, I just wanted to go back to the parking and the valet parking situation. I mean, as I mentioned, the-
Can I cheat for a second? I have, it's all the way at the back, I have, the applicant shall provide valet parking operated pursuant to the parking management plan, any changes will require resubmission of a modified plan to the planning department.
Yeah, but I'd just like to have discussion. Tom, did you want?
Yeah, well, before I finish that, but back to the, the right turns.
Oh, okay, but just back to the, I'd just like to have a discussion about the fact that the, using that office as medical office space adds many more parking spots than if it was a general office use. And so, we're in a situation where we have extremely tight parking, why would we approve the use of that building as for medical office building, rather than just general office, where there's far fewer spaces required, where people go to the office at nine o'clock, they leave at five, there's not this continuing in and out, in an area that's already congested, which already has safety issues, in my view, on Glen Ridge Avenue, so I feel like that should be discussed. I also heard in the course of, like, sitting on this board, that there's a, a demand for general office space, so it's not like they can't rent it, but I, that's out of my bellywood.
Because part of the problem is the localized need for parking on this site, of course, that we're struggling with. So, we see these numbers on a table, and you see a certain variance of four hundred-some spaces, but where the need is greatest is in some ways exacerbated by this being a medical office building right next to the Pig and Prince there.
And respectfully, we've talked about this at length in the fourteen meetings.
Talk about it.
The office itself, first of all, we have a medical use, which is a terrific medical office use that we, that we already have. Secondly, regular offices much worse, we operate those. Everybody comes in over like an hour and a half period of time, everybody leaves over an hour and a half period, creating much more traffic in the streets, about which there was a tremendous amount of testimony. Medical office is more spread out, it's also totally complimentary to a restaurant, because there's very, very little medical office at night. There is some limited on Saturday, and there's not on Sunday. So, for us, it has been part of the plan all along, we've submitted substantial testimony about the traffic and the parking, and it's something we really would like to see be part of this plan.
Just since you had mentioned that, I also went, I guess it's Summit Medical that you might've been looking at, but I went to their websites, and while it says that they have certain hours, it also says that they operate outside of the nine to six or whatever, you know, your, your testimony was, that they do work on weekends, it depends on what's in the office building, if it's a lab, that can be weekends, or at night, but if it's a medical office, some doctors have evening hours, so it's not gonna be like it's totally empty at night.
It's extremely limited. We know-
Well, I'm just looking at their website.
We, we understand. Most of the operators are extremely limited, except for some Saturdays, usually like half, half a day, but we can tell you that, like, for example, at Valley and Bloom, the biggest problem that we have with parking in that garage, the number one biggest problem, just operationally to deal with, is the office, because everybody comes in the most compacted period of time.
Just for your information, the medical office use requires one hundred and forty-five spaces. If that was regular office, general office would be eighty-seven spaces. So, the difference is fifty-eight.
Do we wanna talk about this further?
It does seem like a little bit of a trade-off. I mean-
It seems like a trade-off, I, again, with the, the amount of space and the logic that's been presented about the different kinds of activity. You know, I don't have a problem with it. Of course, all of that, all of that traffic is going to be traffic that can be controlled, to a certain extent, in the parking plan, as to where the, where the valets go, and, you know, what routes they take, that kind of thing.
Yeah, but that's if you buy into the efficacy of the parking plan and the valet parking, which I personally think are as dangerous, and-
I understand, and I-
I know, I've said it.
Thank you.
Uh, no lab, is that right?
It's medical office.
Office, not a lab?
Right.
All right. Yeah, that's, that is spread out. Okay, lab is-
Probably should say that in the resolution.
No lab.
No labs. I don't have a problem with the resolution saying medical office, no laboratories.
That's fine.
Okay, I'd like it to be as, as exact as possible.
Good, okay.
The plant shall provide a twenty percent set aside as shown on their affordable housing plan, and they agreed, am I okay?
I was gonna talk about the truck, truck parking.
Oh, go ahead.
How do they, how do they get in to the parking lot? Do they come only from the east or only from the west?
I can't answer.
Yeah, but, they would, they could come in from either direction.
Right.
They're probably mostly gonna come in from the east.
Coming from the east, then go.
But there's no, there's nothing preventing them coming from the west. What, what we're, what the proposal here is to say no left turns out of the parking lot.
Correct, that's what we had agreed.
No left turn.
No left turns out.
Right. But then can they go along, I think it's Greenwood Avenue, is it Greenwood Avenue? I mean, I would like to try to avoid these trucks going through the residential areas around-
If they can't turn left, they can't take, they can't take Greenwood Avenue.
Hmm, right, okay.
When they're leaving, right.
Once you get off the site, or will we become, our superpowers are very limited?
No, I mean, I'm talking about them, can they drive to get into the site using the residential streets, or do you make, well then maybe we should try to see if we can make them no trucks.
That's an issue, but that's, that's an issue for the town, that's not, that's beyond what we can do here.
On your truck signage, I rec, I would recommend that it be, the, the plan be approved by the board's traffic engineer, not the board's engineer.
Okay.
Okay. Easily changed.
We need the affordable housing?
Yeah, the, the plant shall provide a twenty percent set aside, that's one of the cornerstones of this operation.
And they submitted a plan that showed where those units would be.
Uh, can we specify that a little more? Is it potentially five percent of that to affordable senior housing and five percent to workforce housing, is that possible?
No, no.
Can't do that?
No. Our ordinance requires twenty percent affordable housing, not senior housing.
No, senior affordable.
That, no, that's senior housing.
Nine, the applicant is to comply with all the board's, it's not really nine, at this point, it's like fifteen or something, but, the applicant is to comply with all the board's professional review letters, that's kinda standard. The intersection from Grove Street to Bloomfield Avenue is to be restriped to make it a-
Oh, actually, that's, I'm sorry to cut you off, the applicant's to comply with the board's professional review letters.
Yeah.
I, I got to over wordsmith this, and we can play with this during the resolution, I just wanted to, and, and with all due respect to Mr. Ross and others who've issued many review letters over the course of this, I just want-
There were a lot in this case.
Yeah, I just wanna clarify that we'll figure out the right words, but we'll comply with the professional review letters as, to the extent we, it was agreed to by the board and the applicant in meetings and otherwise in responses. Obviously, if there's stuff in review letters that, you know, would've resulted in the application being denied or would, you know, cause us to redesign the entire application, I, I don't wanna say we agreed to that.
Okay, understood. So, anyway, the next thing I, is to, Grove to Bloomfield Avenue is to be restriped to make it a true two-line intersection with a dedicated left-turn lane to improve safety. But that has to be done by an outside agency, do you have any commitment for that?
Do you think we need more?
Mr. Turner?
Do you think we need more?
We can figure out the language, I get, I, I'm, I'm familiar, we've, the board's familiar with where we've drafted these types of conditions in the past to make them subject to approval by the outside agency.
Okay, then the next one I have is-
I'm not sure what you mean by that, what, the intersection from Grove, do you mean the left turn on Bloomfield Avenue that goes into the Bloomfield Avenue entrance?
No, I think they're talking about the, the north-south, where Grove goes into, becomes Elm Street on the other side.
Yeah.
So, if you're going southbound on Grove, when you get to the intersection, there's, people usually go, make a left turn, but it's not striped, and it's, it would be better to define it. Same type of thing, the timing changes made at the light on Glen Ridge are subject to the county's approval. They told us they're gonna make timing changes, but they need the county's authorization, so that's an outside agency approval.
So, what timing changes are you making? I mean, I don't recall discussing timing changes.
I thought during their traffic, they were talking about adjusting the light for how the cars are coming and going, but- Right, between, between how they- I doubt it. Between how they correspond between the Bloomfield Avenue section and Glen Ridge.
Oh, oh, that way, okay.
So, can I, can I go back to the-
Sure.
Striping?
Yes.
And I imagine this is what Mr. Webb is looking at, is that his last site plan shows Grove as a four-lane all the way between Glen Ridge and Bloomfield, where there are dedicated left-hand turn lanes, northbound and southbound. So, just so everyone's clear, that was in the latest plan set that I have, that's dated November fifteenth, twenty eighteen.
So, can you just describe what they are, I'm sorry, so you're going south on Grove Street, there's gonna be a dedicated left-hand-
There's two lanes, the whole stretch between Glen Ridge and Bloomfield, so four lanes total.
Yeah, yeah, so going south, you're gonna make a line to, give you an arrow going into the supermarket.
There won't be any arrows.
Oh.
I'm sorry, there won't be any lines telling you, other than the lines that separate the two lanes, but when you get to the intersection, there'll be arrows, that say the left lane is for turns only.
Into the supermarket, are we talking about that?
No, no.
All right, I got that, yeah, yeah, I got that, right, right, right.
To be clear, that's our understanding from the county, that's not our direction.
Yep.
Right, and that's how, how many of the streets, if you go down to like the Highland intersection, that's how it is, it's just arrows. To, to be fair, I was asked the question, Daniel was asking me this, if, if we make a requirement that the county do something, and then they don't, they don't do it, then I think it's gotta come back for this board, it's not automatic like the county said, like you have a no left-hand turn. If the county says, oh no, you can't do that, no left-hand turn, I think that that information's gotta be provided to the board, and we have to consider, do we have an alternative on a non-county way, or do we have to live with it? But I, you know, sometime, you know, they can't meet any of these conditions, even if it's outside agency, they should come back and report to us if they can't meet it.
As it, yeah, it impacts ingress egress to the west parcel, et cetera.
I've seen situations where if you change, you could change the traffic flow or something, it makes a difference to a board. But the point is, I want you to feel comfortable that it's more likely than not that the county's going to be able to do what they're proposing.
You're talking...
But if for some reason they can't, it should come back to us to at least understand it, if not change the plan somehow.
Is it possible, with, on that idea, that in the event that the county denies it, that it could be an issue that goes to the revisions committee to be worked out?
I, we can, let's, let's leave it alone for right now, because you think you're going to get it and you're trying to protect your client, I understand, but, you know, let's not get bogged down on that right now.
But I still have a question, and that is about the mid-block entrance to the supermarket. We're talking about the corners and that's arrows and all, but what about the fact that we have an entrance mid-block into the supermarket area on Grove Street?
I'm going to need help with that.
And how do we get that managed?
Mid-block entrance?
No, so right, so if you come down the street, let's say you come from the base station and you make the left down, yes, you make the left down Grove, and you reach mid-block, you either right now would have to walk back up to Glen Ridge or all the way down to Bloomfield, whereas unfortunately, many people would likely want to jaywalk across there. And is there any way to have striping or some sort of a crossing?
No.
At midway, right between Glen Ridge and Bloomfield, that's what you're driving around.
Pretty high traffic.
Well, I'm speaking of that in terms of the car traffic. If you're, if you're driving on Grove Street and you decide you want to get into the supermarket entrance there, what about, if you're coming north, then you need a left turn to do that, right? And if you're coming out of the supermarket and you want to go north, you're going to need to make that turn. And it seems mid-block that that's going to be rather difficult, given the amount of traffic on Grove Street.
I believe, I remember a specific sense of conversation, that Chairman Nguyen was very much involved in it, about which turn we thought was an issue or wasn't. And I know they went through a lot of it, and the, and the consultants went through a lot of it, but I think in the end, there was one restriction. I just honestly don't remember which one it was.
You can't turn left out of that. You can turn right.
I don't remember which one it was, but we all agreed to something.
Right. And they moved because the, I think the driveways were almost opposite.
Right, and when we put in the ramp, we had to change it.
We did move the driveway bit, but, but if you're coming north, then you can't make, you can't make a left turn into that parking lot either, though.
You can make a left turn if you're going north, but there's a lane. You'll, you know, there's...
Mid-block I'm talking.
Yeah.
Into the, into the...
Into the...
Into the parking lot, yes. You can make a left turn, but there's, that's, that's why there's a, you're having the two, two lanes each way, so that that lane can be a queue into there.
It seems to me that it's going to be a rather difficult queue, don't you think?
I'm sorry, it's been, it's been clarified. We did, we added, at the request of the board, we added a left turn to separate it to the queue, wouldn't impact the people trying to get out and make a right. There's a separate left-hand lane.
So it's striped?
Striped, just to make a left.
Mid-block.
Correct, correct.
So if you're going north on Grove Street and you want to turn in to the...
Parking lot. You're saying there's a striped left-hand turn lane?
No, I thought you were saying coming out.
Well, I'm asking both.
Well, it's only one thing at a time. Coming out, there's a left turn lane.
A left turn only lane.
Correct.
Okay.
And coming in, there's a left turn lane too, correct?
Yeah.
Well, there's, there's two, there's two, there's two lanes. I don't think there's a, but there's like a third.
Because there's two lanes, you'll be able to turn left.
Yeah, to go around.
And the other one will go around.
So coming out of the shopping center, going north on Grove Street, you can make a left onto Grove to go north?
Correct, in a separate lane that the board asked us to add.
Okay.
And even with the traffic going north on Grove at that point, it's usually not two lanes of traffic going side by side north. It's usually one car sitting in the middle of the road going up, so.
And right now, there's no changes proposed to striping on Bloomfield. That was the whole concern about a left over the double-stripped median.
No, no striping, no changes to the striping on Bloomfield, and the entrance to the parking lot on Bloomfield Avenue should be right in and right out only.
Right.
It's shown on the plan though, right?
Right.
Right. In other words, you make a right turn into the lot if you're going west, and when you come out of the lot, you can only go west.
There's no left turns.
No left turns. No crossing.
You can make a left-hand turn if you're going east.
Eastbound on Bloomfield.
No. No. Only right.
County's redesigning that.
If the county redesigns it, yes, but presently, right now, you cannot.
But that, the county's doing...
We just need to know...
Because right now, it's not because it's a double line, it's because it's a striped median. You can't turn left across the striped median.
And I think the striped median is what's shown on Mr. Webb's plan.
There isn't, there isn't any restriction that we have on our plan, and there isn't any restriction by the county. You can currently make a left turn today.
You cannot.
In any case, we don't want any left turns in, and we want you, we want you to design the entrance so that it doesn't suggest that you can make a left turn into the parking lot off of Bloomfield Avenue. In other words, you know how the parking lot down the street has the triangular island?
Right.
So that it's right in and right out.
Okay. This has never been part of what we designed. There was a suggestion that it wasn't permitted, but it is permitted per town.
Right, but we don't think that it should be allowed.
It's not permitted because it's not a double line, it's effectively a painted island. But if you ask the police, they think you can make a left turn there, and yet because it has the island design, you're not supposed to. That's the problem.
And for purposes of traffic safety, we don't want to encourage the left turn off of Bloomfield Avenue into that lot. If they want to get into the lot, they go to the light, they make the left at the light, and then they go in on the side on Grove Street.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I was going to add to that was, the county is apparently redesigning that area.
Oh, they are.
And would account for it, and they've actually taken into consideration the movement of the relocation of the driveway.
The problem, I guess, is, is again, with the, we've talked about the valet parking, and again, trying to, trying to cut down on the more dangerous moves that could be around the center with, you know, granted there, yes, there is going to be some increased traffic movement. So we're trying to take all of that into consideration and balance. And since there's an alternative way to get into the parking lot, that's, that's more controlled, that it's better to do that on Grove Street than it is to have to do that on Bloomfield Avenue.
I think what, what we could say, and respectfully to the point that Mr. Galvin made, is that we're okay with that so long as the county is, but this can't be something where we say, then we come back, because the county's in the middle of a $6 million Bloomfield Avenue redo.
Right. If the county changes the road, but it doesn't change the way your entrance will be constructed.
Right.
Taken before, and lets the county...
We're supportive of it, as long as the county doesn't get in the way.
...what the county wants.
Right.
I mean, from a safety point of view, if you're walking along Bloomfield Avenue, you have cars making the right, and then you're going to have to watch for cars turning into the left, and it just, it's from an pedestrian point of view, it's crazy. So it's best to restrict that.
So it's cutting down some of the movement.
Yeah, yeah.
The only challenge is coming north on Elm or east on Bloomfield.
Well, if you're going north on Elm, you keep straight.
Right, but they're both then queuing for that one point to go into the lot. And that, that's just the only reason I even raise this, just to anticipate that, but I think it's the best that we can do, so.
It's better to put it on Grove Street than it is on Bloomfield Avenue.
We'll check with the county and advise if there's an issue that we, that they have with it. They shouldn't theoretically.
The Historic Preservation Commission shall be consulted on the look and content of the markers for the historic features with explanations. The applicant shall submit a master signage plan to be approved by the Historic Preservation Commission and to this board in the event of a variance. Fourteen, the applicant agreed not to utilize battens and will use another type of seeming material that is to be reviewed and approved by the Plans Revision Committee. I think you have to, in generally speaking, all finishes and materials need to be reviewed by the revisions committee also.
Yeah, I mean, we really haven't given, I mean, we gave the apartment buildings a review early on, and they've kind of receded in discussion. I think we need to come back to that.
We have no problem with what was just suggested. All the materials we showed are the materials we're going to use. There'll be no battens, and we're glad to come in and show the materials. We're not making any changes.
And I think we also need to discuss possibly some design elements, because I think I like Steve's idea about maintaining all of the stanchions on the site, and it's possible that they can be used and incorporated. The ones that need to be removed and moved can be reused on the site in different places, but it's something that needs to be examined as to exactly where they'll be put. So to the extent that there's a determination that maybe they're used in the garage area and the entrance area, as Steve suggested, or others, that might cause some revisions to the actual building itself.
I, I'd missed, I was doing something at the moment. The metal panels, I want to come back to the residential, what was the final outcome? I think we had banned using those metal panels except for details under windows, because there was one part of the residential area that was, that showed a lot of metal, and I think we had, when we looked at that at the DRC, I think we rejected that.
Well, we're glad to look at what the record was. I can't honestly remember what...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Can we...
Somebody changes, but we're going to comply with what was agreed upon, and I think it was pretty clear. So we'll take a look and report it back.
The next condition I had kind of countered, is kind of opposite of that, because the architecture and facade material should be done exactly as testified to by the applicant's architect, Mr. Stevie, during the hearings in this manner.
Yeah, but that's, see, that's what I'm saying. The, there was a, there's an issue using those metal panels, and when you see them, like Montclairin's a good example. The facade of the building where they're used as little details, it's fine. On the backside, they're used as full areas, and it just doesn't work. Same with Valley and Bloom, where it's used in full, it just does not work.
Those, I'm sorry, just to clarify, are not metal. That was the issue. Those were cementitious cement boards.
Okay.
The metal is completely different look, which is why we switched to the metal.
Those boards don't work when they take up a lot of space. When they're used as a detail under the windows with, with some molding on them, it blends in. When it, when it's a whole area, and I think you had, you had one bump out of residential space built with that, in contrast, it wasn't working. I don't remember, honestly. We looked at it. So I'd like to reserve final approval for the, because I don't think you want to do it here.
That's fine.
Like to reserve final approval for the residential facade to the revisions committee.
So long as it's, I think, our only point would be, we'd want to be in keeping with what we presented, not to have somebody say, we have a whole new idea.
No, 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 no. We're not talking about redesigning the, the structure, it's the materials. Right, Steve? Remember, remember this conversation?
Yeah.
I don't think we resolved it.
Materials and finishes.
Materials and finishes, okay.
All right. The applicant is to submit a record set of drawings to be approved by the revisions committee to assure that all these conditions, all the conditions of the approval have been met. And then I had, I did a complicated condition, I think it's complicated, that I was looking, we didn't know that we were getting the supermarket that we were presented with tonight. So I had, the board's agreement to grant the parking variance and to permit the elimination of certain historical elements of the building is strictly contingent on a developer providing a supermarket that will serve the community. The applicant has agreed to record a deed restriction confirming that the owner of this property will preserve the untouched historical features of the Lackawanna Station in perpetuity, and if the site abandons the supermarket use, its right to the parking variance shall cease. This condition is to be imposed by means of a deed restriction, which is to be reviewed and approved by special counsel prior to recording, and which must be recorded prior to the issuance of a building permit.
And that's still a clause?
What's that?
Well, I think that the, except for the preserve untouched historical features, I think we have to modify that in order to, because we are allowing them to contemplate that to...
No, I, I didn't, I didn't intend, I'm sorry if it's unclear. I mean, whatever our final output is.
Right.
Since we've had a dispute as to exactly what the historical features are, we need to be specific.
Okay.
And we need to be clear so that, you know, in the future, there's no question.
So we're talking about the, okay, we can, we can clear that up.
I think it would probably be easier to say what it doesn't include as opposed to what it does include.
I think Mr. Galvin and I can come up with something on that. The, the one ask or pushback I would, I would suggest on this is, I know Mr. Galvin suggested a deed restriction. I would request that this remain a condition of approval. Perhaps we could record the resolution if the idea is that some people don't know about it, but, but the method of my madness on the deed restriction is, if it's a deed restriction, then this board no longer has any control over that condition in the future. It, it would be purely resolved by superior court at that point. However, if it's a condition that, of the resolution that still runs with the land, and we would, we could record the resolution so that future owners are aware of it, and can't say they weren't, that the board in the future would retain the ability, if the applicant was to, if an applicant was to return and say, look, I know it says this, but I'd like relief from it, and the board can consider at that time. They could deny the relief, they could grant the relief, however they want to deal with it in the future, but it preserves the board's jurisdiction of that issue.
Split the baby with the bathwater there, didn't you?
He's a smart guy.
Yeah.
You get a gold star for that.
He's a smart guy. I've had a lot of cases on, on restrictions and that the court can relieve them, and I've been to the court two or three times down in Ocean County this year on that topic, so. I'm not sure if you're right, though, that it's, you're still off the hook by just recording the resolution, but...
So, just take...
But the resolution is, doing it is effective.
I think recording the, the purpose of recording anything, whether it's a deed restriction or a resolution, is to put the next person who owns the building on notice that they have that commitment.
Right. Okay, here, here's a, for instance. He proceeds to demo the site, proceeds to build, even though he has a lease with this particular supermarket, for whatever reason, they, they don't comply. Now, he has no tenant, the site is demolished, what happens? He hasn't delivered a supermarket, but we've approved the parking and approved the site modifications to the historic elements as contemplated.
This is like a Stephen King novel.
Yeah.
It's a new application for the board.
So basically, they're not getting site approval if they don't have a supermarket.
Right.
They can't, they can't operate the site without a supermarket.
Without coming back to us.
Without coming back.
And also, it would change the parking requirement, so kind of, it's a control. We give them the parking variance based on the fact that they promised us a supermarket. No, require, that would require anything, even if they were going to change something else, it would require a site plan. Come back before the board. And even though you impose things like, you're never going to change it again, the court could find circumstances where they would allow it, but it would keep them, keep a future owner from saying, oh, I don't like this horse trough, it's in the way, I want three parking spaces, and just clear it out of there, so. And the only thing that, that you've already said, Mr. Chairman, about the parking. So we're, I think we covered what I thought we should keep, keep in mind.
We need to come back to number three, not four.
I think it's three.
You know, and again, that's, that was making sure that we keep the, keep them on site. As to how they're used, I would like to put, how they remain on site, I would like to put that within the view of the revisions committee.
So our architectural consultant gave us a plan.
We have proposals for how they could be used. Maybe they come up with some other way to use them on site. You know, we can also consult with any, any of the other board consultants in getting input on where they go.
So the intent is to, let's just be clear, we're agreeing to effectively take down the...
Eighteen.
Take down, I think it's sixteen.
Sixteen.
Take down sixteen, remove the roof structures of those...
I think that's necessary.
I'm sorry?
I think we can remove the roof. We have to remove the roof structures when we increase the span.
I understand.
But the other ones.
I'm just identifying what, what's going to happen. We're removing, we're losing sixteen. We're taking the roof structures off, and we may or may not add some metal elements back as Mr. Ross proposed, to be determined based on his alternative plan where he showed, within reason, all parking is retained, that the applicant has effectively proposed.
We would not have a problem... We would not have a problem with Mr. Rooney suggesting, we think we would have a problem trying to outside the purview of the board and the consultants and traffic and engineering to talk about anything in the parking lot, in addition to what we have. Find any other places, perhaps, near buildings, entrances, grass areas. That's a possibility.
I think the parking, having them in the parking lot, we've had, we've had sufficient discussion to say where they would work in the parking lot.
Correct.
So, and if, and if it were a situation where some other proposal would be made other than what's already looked at, I think the committee would need, would, you know, be, be, be well-served to make sure that it could actually function without causing some other problem.
But suggested by who? I'm sorry.
Excuse me?
My concern is, or question is, suggested by whom?
Suggested by you, suggested by you, the applicant, or suggested by the committee. If it was something that the committee really insisted upon, I think that we would need to establish that it didn't.
Okay.
Cause a problem, because it would be ridiculous for us to do, to do otherwise, you know? And I was thinking, again, more in terms of lines of what's already been discussed as a possibility, so far, the parking lot, and then, you know, perhaps other places around the site where we haven't discussed using.
I was just saying, certainly in terms of if Mr. Galvin, I can wordsmith this for the board's future consideration, but I would say, you know, we'll endeavor, as long as it's not an absolute, hopefully it doesn't become an absolute requirement that literally everyone be reused, because, for example, if the committee was to agree that it doesn't make sense to reuse all of them.
I think we need to keep all of them on site, somehow.
And that includes the East parcel?
Right. I think they need to all be included on the site somehow, you know, so that, you know, in the future, you know, maybe they could be reused, put back in their original place, maybe, you know? I think that's a good compromise.
Mr. Ross, if you remember from his final memo, had posed creating the feeling of the linear tracks, linear sheds, with some kind of metal beam on top. The chair had suggested, and the vice chair had suggested making that a less heavy element. We had never really resolved that, and maybe it's not the place to do it here. But those, that was, that was the variable, I think.
Right. And, and even if they're just put off to the side in some, you know, to the, to the edge of the parking lot in some innocuous place, so that they don't, they don't get removed from the area, so that they could be repositioned if necessary, if desired.
I think if you leave it that way, the only safety valve, I don't know what other phrase to use, is that if the committee agrees, we obviously can't tell the committee what to do, that there are no other places left to put the last four or five or whatever, without it being silly, we'd like the committee to have the ability without having a problem, because we have looked pretty hard.
Well, then maybe we, maybe we can find some public property or some other place in town to put them, but we would like, but we would like to keep as much.
Museums that have said they'd be interested.
We'd like to keep as much on the property as possible.
Subject to the committee, that's fine.
Yeah, and then the committee can, if we bury from that, then I think we can figure out a way to deal with it.
A couple of years ago, Del Barton was doing some digging and found columns from the old Penn Station that were buried there.
Hmm.
So maybe if we can give them to Del Barton.
Are there any other?
Well.
Things that we haven't talked about?
Yeah, I have something, just maybe it's not conditioned, but just.
We talked about pedestrian.
Wait a minute, for just, okay, well, yeah.
Talk about pedestrian access and pedestrian, that's something that needs to go through the revisions committee.
I think, again, I think there's been, there had been some talk or suggestions about maybe moving the stairway.
Right.
And I think that that's worth, you know, looking, if there's a way to improve the pedestrian circulation, you know, that, that we haven't discussed, that that comes up, you know, or that the applicant might offer, or that the committee might offer, then, you know, it's something that we should discuss. But I think, in, in terms of, of the resolution, I think that the pedestrian, the committee should look at the pedestrian access to make sure that the best possible solution, given all the other elements of the plan, is being implemented for that.
I have a question for the applicant. Since your grocery store is now going to be roughly 29,000 square feet, does that allow any activation of Glen Ridge Avenue?
No, so the loading dock was the major point.
Well, but you, you know, you still, I don't know how, why, I just don't off the top of my head how wide that space is, but no, it doesn't, you're saying.
Well, they have a loading dock, and you still have the backs.
Yeah.
You still have the back of the operation.
I don't know how you plan to put in.
We've discussed that at length, and we just don't, I, I know you've talked about it respectfully.
I've talked about it at length, yes.
We do have five ways in. I've said this multiple times, and I challenge you to find another food store with five ways in. And as to the stairs, by the way, we measured it, I think it's less than 50% of the distance. If you're at Glen Ridge and Grove now, and you want to walk to, you wanted to walk to the path mark, you had to walk all the way to Bloomfield and make a right and come in because there's a wall there. So now you'd be able to go down the stairs. The stairs, though, I don't know if they can slide north or south, although we're glad to talk with the committee, because the handicap ramp is to one end.
Well, you have to move, you'd have to move the ramp, too, to see if, to see if that whole thing would work.
Yeah, the ramp goes to the end of the parking lot, otherwise you go into the parking lot. We're glad to look at it, if there's any adjustability.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, that's what, that's what I'd like to do, just see if there's a way to do it.
And the same thing with the width of the access. I think it goes up to where the columns are that we're not taking down, and I think it's about 18 feet, but we can look at that.
As long as they're wide as possible.
Wide as possible, we agree.
I have one request, suggestion. Since we now have identified the potential tenant, is there any opportunity for a temporary pop-up type of operation during the construction period, that you allocate an area and they potentially operate to serve the community during that time? Maybe they'll want to do it just to, to create market awareness.
A long time, because somebody said, "Let me say this about that," so that's the only way I could start this, which I think would be, I think would be very difficult to do, but having just met the Lidl folks, and Hampshire's been spending a lot of time with them, rather than having us both get up, they're a worldwide company, maybe they have some thoughts we don't, we'd certainly be open to it, but realize it's a big safety and practical challenge.
Understood. Perhaps could put in some language, make a good faith effort to discuss that with them, and see if there's some kind of food service that we can provide for.
Glad to do that.
For the community within the interim period.
Good idea.
I'd just like to point out, their website, maybe you're aware of this, the Lidl website says, "The store for special buildings, whether in a train station, historical building, or a stadium, we respond to the existing conditions on a case-by-case basis. In the process, we integrate our stores with their overall landscape in order to create greater value for our communities. We develop creative solutions for site-specific problems and ensure that our customers obtain modern, enjoyable shopping experiences they have come to expect from Lidl." In other words, they must do adaptive reuse, and yet you're not even thinking about.
As they're doing here, exactly. As they're doing here.
Not to the full extent.
I'd like to add another condition, just as referenced in Mr. Watkins' memo of November 19th, that we'd expect the applicant to post a performance guarantee pursuant to municipal land use law requirements.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I was in, I have certain standard conditions that I add, but those weren't listed among our, these are special conditions.
Okay.
We don't object to that, though.
Okay.
Is this the only opportunity we have for adding conditions?
Pretty much. Once the resolution is voted on, it's.
Well, we're not voting on it tonight.
We're reading it first, right?
No.
We're voting on the resolution tonight without having read what your.
Well, we vote on the resolution, and then the.
I'll memorial, I'll do a memorialized document, then you.
And then we have a chance to review that, to make sure that aligns with the resolution, with what we verbally, that's the way that we vote.
I believe the applicant testified that the water trough would be activated with water, is that correct? But it was on the, it was on the initial plans? I just want to make sure it carried forward to the latest.
Yes, that's correct. I think it may be on the updated plans, but nonetheless.
I believe Mr. Webb added a water line to that in response.
So we wouldn't need a resolution for that, it's just in line with the latest plans?
It's on the plan.
I believe so. Did we ask about a record set, too?
Yes.
We did. Okay, good. And then, did we talk about electric charging stations?
No.
Was that part of this?
No, we're, our view, and again, some of you know I'm very involved in that world, our view is that landscape is changing so rapidly, who owns them, who doesn't, how it works. Already, we're looking at change at Valley and Bloom, I don't know if you've talked to your folks at your Gray in town, so we're very eager to do as much of that as we can wherever, but it's changing so rapidly. Wish they were charging more rapidly, no pun intended, but that's part of the problem, is that the charging is so slow, and none of the companies who do it for a profit want to put in the fast charging, and you're kind of in this conundrum. But the technology's changing rapidly, and in fact, as we're involved with the town on the one on Glen Ridge, the town is looking into, for your own garage, other potential options. And what they're really looking at right now, frankly, is putting in the power infrastructure without anything in particular, because they want to wait till it becomes a little more mature of an industry. It's, as a charge per vehicle for third parties, the industry is pretty limited right now.
So is that, I, I'm just wondering, is that something we discussed here in the last year's hearings, that you were going to put that type of infrastructure in?
We, we didn't, and we certainly want to have the flexibility to do it as we see fit, but we don't really know what that is yet, and we're going to be doing a lot of research ourselves as to what we'll do when we open.
Well, we have to allow parking spaces to be used for that?
Yes.
Yeah, we would have it.
Yes, normally those are, what you do is you provide a certain number of your parking spaces for, for the fast, fast, I would recommend fast charging.
So can we provide that, we'll allow them to convert no more than a certain amount of parking spaces into charging spaces subject to planning board approval or committee approval?
I would suggest that you actually reverse that and say, "At least."
At least?
Because, again, you're, you're right, the market's changing, but you got to start somewhere.
Okay.
So I know in Valley and Bloom, we looked at two.
That they would be allowed to.
When we did the one at, the 11 units on Park Street, we required one. So, and that was per zoning, not per redevelopment, so I think it'd be reasonable to request two charging stations as part of this.
That they were allowed to install at least two.
Right.
Charging stations.
That's fine.
Without having to come back to the board.
But just to be clear, again, it's the same thing with the town is doing, the technology everybody's working on now doesn't take up any space, and it would be identical to another space?
With this.
And there would just be a wall plate?
It doesn't require you to, but it allows you to if you need to.
Correct. Oh, okay, I see what you're saying, it doesn't matter anymore. Right, that's fine.
Anything else?
I guess this is not for the applicant, but given the use of the post office, is there any opportunity to put in any kind of special, you know, those buttons you press and it makes the traffic stop?
I think that's a, that's, again, county, that's.
It's part of the county plan for all those lights. Pedestrian heads.
I was talking about mid-crossing from the post office to the other side.
That would be a township issue.
That's a township issue, yeah.
In my understanding, the post office only leases that property, which may be up, so I don't know how long the post office is going to be there. Things change.
Do you have any knowledge that they're thinking of not being there?
There, I'm just throwing that out.
Okay. Also, I wanted to ask you about, Cajano's is another property that's nearby. Something's going on with that, I gather?
Which one?
Cajano's, the liquor store?
Yes.
That would have an effect on this?
It wouldn't have any effect on this, they're thinking of relocating. So again, the owners and the tenant are looking, considering making changes, it doesn't really affect this.
Well, I'm thinking of the traffic if that were to generate another building down there. That doesn't, all right.
It doesn't really affect this application.
You brought away from number five, I'm not sure what got reported on that. Could you, to the chairman, just.
It's supposed to be removed.
The applicant is through, oh, the, I guess ultimately you agreed that you would remove the accumulated snow from both the loading area and the parking lot. Is that what you were asking?
Yes, I'm asking what, what.
I mean, they didn't want to do that. What they wanted, they were agreeable to removing the, the snow from the site in the loading area, and they were basically kind of pleading with us that they could use some of the parking lot to store some of the snow.
No, I, that's what I'm concerned about, because I don't think that's approved.
The problem is when there's a two-inch snowstorm, that would mean activating tractor-trailer, not tractor, excuse me, dump trucks to come here to remove two inches of snow in a little tiny pile. So that's what we're trying to say, I hear what you're saying.
But I want, I want to protect the, the.
We appreciate that.
The bigger snowstorm where you've got a parking space full of snow as opposed to cars.
We agree, so maybe.
So how do we get that in a res, in a.
Well, why don't you let me and Mr. Troutner work that out? We'll figure out a, we'll figure out an inch total that they'll make a commitment.
To remove. And then otherwise, below that inch commitment, then it will be so that it doesn't impede parking. But once it gets above that, then it'll be absolutely removed.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think I would like to tie it to not impeding parking, but I'm not sure how to do that, you know? Doesn't take up more than five spaces.
10% of the, what, you know.
Something like that, we would be, yeah, that would make sense.
Right, but I, but I don't, but that's, but I don't know what that, that number is, because.
We've already lost six spaces to the valet service, so we're down from 459 to 453. And I don't really, I know in many lots, when it snows, there's, there's parking spaces that are just totally taken off.
Just become a mound of snow. Yeah, I understand.
And I don't want to see that happening in this parking lot.
Well, see, but I, I would be okay with it, say, for instance, there's 20 cars parked in the lot, if you had five spaces full of snow, and there's still, you know, 100 spaces, just making these numbers up.
Well, I hope that we don't have that kind of shopping.
I'm hoping not either, but, but my, my point is, my point is that, you know, it's almost.
Bound promenality.
Percentage of, you know, such that 95% of the available parking wasn't impeded or some, I'm, I don't know how to put that in a right way, but I'm saying if the parking lot is not that utilized at the moment, I'm okay if they have snow there, but if people start showing up and want to park, they got to get the snow out of there. I don't know how to put that into a, in a right condition.
It's pretty hard to do that.
It's a lot more difficult, but I would like them to do that if we were to allow them to store any snow there.
Perhaps we could tie that to the parking management plan.
Is that part of the parking management plan?
Put that in the parking management plan, and I think what we talked about, talked about is having the parking management plan reviewed on an annual basis by the revisions committee, and that way we'll have a feel for actual utilization of the parking lot.
And how will, so will the management plan include some sort of periodic, you know, evaluation of, here's how many cars were parked, you know, in the Lackawanna Plaza lot?
Right, and I think.
At certain times.
I think they'll provide, right, they'll provide, because it's going to be a managed, these are all managed parking lots, so co-park, whoever is manager of parking, your parking resources, will provide an annual report, the revisions committee can review it, and you'll also have the, the experience of having used that parking lot, so you'll know if it's working or not.
And Carol and I are going to go around taking pictures when it snows.
Well, I'm just, I just, I want to make sure that the report we get is going to have the right information, it's not going to be, everything's good, or it's so-so.
I think we'll have.
They'll give you some data.
Some, some hard numbers of, you know, here's how many movements we typically make.
I think those are great thoughts, if I could put up, suggest putting them together. We, it's a good idea to put it in the plan, and come up with some language between council as to what the parking snow removal idea is.
Yeah.
And then we can look at it on a regular basis, because 10 years from now.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
We'll have a lot less cars 20 years from now.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with the flexibility, I just wanted to think through, like, you Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with the flexibility. I just wanted to think through, like, you know, quarterly, you've got to do some count over the 24-hour period, you know, so we get a little bit of numbers.
And if it's not working, then it has to be revised--
Right.
--to, so that it does work, whatever it takes.
And put that into, write that into the resolution, because this is something we're not, you know, every, with every application we're doing parking management, it's, it's getting a little bit more complex and complicated. I think we do need to have a mechanism by which it can be reviewed, evaluated, and tweaked.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, when it snows, you also aligns the--
Oh, yeah.
You have even less space in parking lot.
I know.
That's right.
And people park very creatively.
Oh, God, I'm one of them.
All right, well, I would like to make a motion that we approve the plan, subject to all of the conditions that we've been discussing.
You have a motion to approve, what conditions, any second?
Second.
Okay. Need to go call again. Chair Wynn?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rota?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Abstain.
Ms. Willis?
Yes.
Mr. Rooney?
Yes.
Ms. Lockman?
Abstain.
And Mr. Gilmer?
Yes.
All right, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
Thank you all. Thank you.
I think we should also thank the public who've been here at multitude of meetings, and thank you for coming and offering your comments, thoughts.
Agreed, those present and not present.
Have some friends.
All right. We have further business this evening.
Let us just that we postpone discussion of the Haines, amended Haines redevelopment plan to our next meeting.
Okay.
I have no problem with that.
Can I ask one, just one quick question for clarification? The red lines, are they the red lines from the last version we saw?
Yes, not from the original. Okay, so I'm just focusing on the changes since we last saw it.
Okay.
Okay.
Congratulations.
For what has been asked.
I, no. Well, we suggested something. So I think our changes that we suggested are not included in the red lines. That's where I kind of want to get to, is, we saw, we saw a red line version originally. We made comments on that. The new red lines are from the version that we saw and commented on, but don't necessarily include our comments.
Right, if you, if it, what it doesn't include, you can assume it was--
It was rejected by the council.
It's what the council's proposing.
Sure.
Yeah.
They read your report, considered it, and this is what they introduced.
So, so I can, from, from--